Call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Mike Lan, could we have roll call please?
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you all here to the meeting tonight. Looks like a full house. Haven't seen well, we're getting kind of getting used to that the last couple of meetings. So, good to see you all though.
Hot.
Yeah. Good to see you all. Next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. We do have a, I'm guessing, it's not on here, but I'm guessing the city will be closed this coming Monday for Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. And we have a couple of proclamations. First up is EMS Week, May 20th through the 26th. Commissioner Chatterley has it.
Emergency Medical Services Week, May 20th through the 26th, 2018. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers, now therefore be resolved that James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim May 20th through the 26th, 2018 as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Raton, and invite citizens and civic organizations to extend heartfelt thank you and to recognize the contributions which Raton Emergency Medical Services made every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, and witness thereof he has set his hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of May, 2018. Do we have someone here?
Smile big. Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Commissioner Jacomo with Public Works Week.
National Public Works Week, May 20th, 26th, 2018. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday life, and whereas the support of understanding and informed citizen is vital to be efficient operation of public works system and programs such as water, stir streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on the facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore it be resolved that new James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May 20th to May 26th, 2019 as National Public Works Week in the City of Raton, and invite citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works official make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Witness, whereas I have here and do set my hand and seal and cause the seal of City of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of May, 2018. Signed, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. This time, we will take any comments from the general public. However, if you are here regarding something that is on the agenda further down, I please ask you to wait until that item comes up, but if there's anything else, right now, we would definitely like to hear from you. Alrighty, seeing none, we'll move on to the business section. Section 7, Item A is approval of the May 8th, 2018, regular commission meeting minutes and the May 14th, 2018, special budget workshop meeting. All have the minutes in your packet, have a chance to look at them?
Committee reports.
Did I skip something?
Skip the commissioner report.
I sure did.
We changed it.
We changed it.
I got new glasses too, and they're not quite right.
Okay, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
I have a couple.
Okay.
So I took the liberty and decided to report just a little bit on MOLI, even though it's not technically a committee. So I attended a 20-hour education training with the Municipal Leadership Institute, which is called MOLI, May 16th through the 18th in Santa Fe, and during this training we had a good turnout, and I was able to network with about 25 other newly elected and a few seasoned municipal officials throughout the state. And we were instructed on topics such as municipal government and court, parliamentary procedure, budgeting, tax structure, lobbying, land use, minimizing risk, and the Open Meetings Act. It was very informative, and I do plan to attend the other two sessions on governance and leadership later this year. And I would like to thank the City of Raton for allowing me to attend and supporting the education of our public officials. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And as soon as we were done with MOLI training, I headed over to the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board Meeting, which was also in Santa Fe that afternoon. We had a good turnout from Colfax County, Lyndon Newton, the county commissioner, and Tracy Boyce, who is a member-at-large and lives in Cibron, were both in attendance for our county. The majority of time was spent on North Central's budget, which was not approved at this time. They're still waiting on some information from the state to finalize the figures and their AAA status, which I think we all are aware of. They are looking at roughly a 50% reduction in their budget because of the aging of long-term services, so they're planning some pretty big layoffs, about 15 of their 32 staff, but nothing has been finalized at this point. The meeting ran about three hours, so we lost a lot of board members through that time. Scott Beckman did bring up at the end the regional economic development priorities, which started with an overview of the La Restra statewide comprehensive economic development strategy, which is really interesting, and you can find out a lot more information on the restraproject.com website. There is an interactive map that has all the projects that they are involved with throughout the state. Really good idea. The main point of that, of this focus was that, let's see, we're going to lose them here. We discussed their goals to help stimulate collaboration in our region with economic development, and their focus now is to strategize on a regional basement basis and maximize impact in all communities. So they're really encouraging us to communicate better with each other in our communities and to get our economic development dollars working together as a region. I did bring up several initiatives in Raton, including some with the Center for Sustainable Community and the Great Blocks Project with Main Street. Other communities were very interested in what we're doing in Raton, and they're, everyone is trying to find better ways to communicate between municipalities. Overall, just the feeling there was that we have to think regionally to thrive in that discussion. And then I have one final report.
Okay.
I'm also serving on the Raton Beautification Coalition, which is made up of volunteers from Raton Parks and Rec, Grow Raton, Raton Main Street, the Raton Chamber of Commerce, the Center for Sustainable Community, and other volunteers. As you've probably noticed, we do have some lights going up downtown on the historic street lamps, and we would like to thank RPS for their work in making sure that everything was functioning, and there's a few things, and they went through and reset some stuff. There's still a few little odds and ends, but they really had helped us a lot. We've had the flags for Clayton Road, ready to go for a little while in South Second. We were waiting for some conflicts to end there. We have the Run for the Wall flags, and we'll have a Memorial Day flag. So when those come down, then we'll be putting those up there. We did replace 25 brackets on those, so for everyone's benefit, and made about 100 of the PDC flag holders. The flowers arrived yesterday in time for the hailstorm. So, that was a stressful moment, but Katy at Abundance Gardens has been taking good care of them and getting them going again, and they, they're, they look good, they're just, they're going to cascade throughout the summer. So when they first go up, it might be like, oh, that's not as exciting, but they will grow. And the downtown banners, we're just waiting on the shipment for those. As part of this effort, we have also compiled a list of summer events in order to promote everything going in Raton together. So posters for these events should be up around town, and then we're working on Explore Raton as well. The center is working on that. And we'll be promoting additional events as they come up, because not everything fit on our poster. We kept growing the poster. So, we do have a website with the Explore Raton, and we have social media on Facebook. The Summer of Color is what it's under, and there is a media badge that you can use for any business that wants to put that on their website, that just says, "Join Us" or "Partner Summer of Color," and kind of fun for the website, and then you can use that to link back to either Facebook or Explore Raton. And we would like to thank our local businesses, many of which have been supportive. There's been a lot of enthusiasm for the project, and the Beautification Coalition encourages business owners and residents alike to plant some colorful flowers. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
I attended, Arthur Johnson Memorial Library had their board meeting held on Tuesday, May 15th, 5:30 PM. Library Director Thailand Wright gave her report on building maintenance and the city newsletter. Also, an update on the library and launchpads for, the libraries had launchpads, and four participants who were picked here from Raton. They were Dorothy Bass, project was Wright Riley, which was published in, Bernadette Apodaca, Sugar Me, which was culinary. Katira Valdez was screen graphics and screen printing. Liz Bennett, her project was Practical Grounds, medical fashion, but she withdrew because she sold her patent. Statistical report for the month of March, 2018, at the library, grand circulation to 3,673 items. Monies collected was $855.31, donations were zero, fines $242.96, copies made was $612.35, memorials were zero. Programs held at the library were 15, attended by 82 persons. Story hours held at the library were four, attended by 30 persons. Statistical report for the month of April, 2018, grand circulation was 4,192. Monies collected was $1,466.35, donations were $1,000, fines were $88.07, copies made was $377.65, memorials were zero. Programs held at the library were 22, attended by 152 persons. Story hours held at the library were three, attended by 22. Also have a report on the Raton Public Service Company. Board directors met on April 25th, 2018, at 5:30 PM. The financial and statistical information was presented and covered by Office Manager Jessica Gonzalez. General Manager Sandy Chavez presented and reviewed the 2018-2019 interim budget with the board. She also discussed the segregation process involving the old facility generator and the procedures set in place to start, to start that process. Dave Francino, Assistant General Manager, stated that in his report that Unit 4, the new generator, was still experiencing some problems with engine de-reading and also heat, creating heat problems. The service rep from the Smith Tower Products was on location to help work on correcting the problem. The RPS Service Company had a board meeting last night at May 21st, at 5:30 PM. Main topic of this meeting was the review and approval of the 2019 interim budget, which will include a 2% and 3% employee rate increase for RPS employees. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Chavez.
I do have a Water Board meeting on May 15th. The Water Board met, and they presented us with our new quality, annual quality water, which will be mailed to everybody, you'll get it in your thing by July 1st, and this tells you all about our very good water. We discussed the filter plan upgrade project, construction financing, the 40-year water plan project update, the temporary standards by the EPA on our nitrogen phosphorus, the Lake Malloya Service Spillway Project Report, and the financial report. That's all I have on that one. Then the Financial Board met on May 17th, and we approved the report to be presented to this commission to, on May 22nd meeting. That's it.
Alrighty. Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Housing Authority Board met on May 15th, at noon. Their highlights are their, working up on the summer food program, which you're seeing signs around the community that are indicating that that's coming, and also the merger with the Maxwell Housing Authority is working well, and actually, we're lucky enough to have Mr. Baca here, if there's anything else you'd like to add to that, but.
What I'd like to add is your commission meetings are much more organized. Like their meetings, they walk, they even go have a cigarette. They don't walk around during the meetings, so. It is a different experience. But it's actually going well. We are, obviously residents there are actually getting adjusted to having us manage their properties, and we've been able to purchase quite a bit of equipment, so, you know, water heaters and stuff like that. Two, it's not that they haven't had them in a long years, so. Several thousand dollars in upgrades. Rather than put them on the salaries, we're putting them into the buildings. So, that's a positive.
Very good. May 7th was the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and they've been, they had a very successful gun show that they helped put together and get organized, and so that, that went well, I think. And I think we'll be hearing from the chamber a little bit later on, so I'll keep this short, but it was a good meeting. Good things are happening at the chamber. And then, of course, I attended the Water Board with Commissioner Chavez, and I don't know if this is important or not, but there is a correction to the, regarding Ms. Liz Bennett, she isn't, she did not sell her patent, so I don't, I just don't want that to be a misconception in the community, but she is working on that in different ways, I believe, so I don't, I don't know how, yeah. But, yeah, I talked to her yesterday about it. She's not told it.
Okay. Cut it.
That's it.
Okay, as for myself, I did attend the two RPS meetings that Commissioner Jacomo spoke of. Today, the Raton Senior Citizens Board of Directors met, went over the finances and that for the month of April, and production, everything is running pretty smooth. We submitted our budget after revision today. We were told to reduce our, we were going to get a reduction of 10% in our federal funding. That's in the neighborhood of $55,000. Yeah, it's junk. But the good news is Colfax County stepped up and is helping cover some of that loss. So, services should go on next year unhinged, and we're waiting on the final budget with AAA. They are North Central, they are our sponsors, so we're waiting to see if that truly is the final answer, and we'll go from there. Commissioner Chavez, and myself, and to a little degree, Mr. Berry, met with the county and the representative from Amtrak, Mr. Ray Lang, concerning the Southwest Chief. The news he had was not good that day, possibility of losing line unless certain things are met, some of that being the positive train control. There's a stretch that the railroad, the rail runner uses that Southwest Chief shares of 58 miles that does not have that. The new president for Amtrak, Mr. Richard Anderson, has put out there, if you do not have this in place by December of 2018, we're not going to run our trains on it. However, he neglects to say they don't have it in the East Coast either, but he hasn't put a deadline on them. We're getting letters from folks that use the Southwest Chief, asking for our support. This one, I even goes as far as to saying they want us to support them in the removal of Mr. Anderson as president, so. We'll, we'll see what goes, but we're working with the county. We're in touch with also, gentleman from Lahaina, I forgot his name.
Rick Klein.
Rick Klein, yes. And we're, we're trying to stay on top of this, that Southwest Chief is important to this area, so everyone that you can talk to and that you know, please do so, because that is a vital cog in, in our community. And that is all the committee reports I have for today.
One other note, that at North Central, he did say that they believe they'll be keeping District 2, which is us.
Right.
But they would be losing 3 and 4 probably.
Right, right. Alrighty. Now we can move on, right?
Yep.
Alright. Item 7, number A, approval of the May 18th, regular commission meetings and the May 14th, special budget workshop meeting minutes. Had them in your packet?
I found nothing on the, the special session and the other minutes that we have. I'd make a motion to approve.
One second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes as they are, is there? And a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Item B, report from the City of Raton Branding Committee. Alrighty. Please state your name and.
Good evening. My name is Devin Barton. I am from Grow Raton, this particular situation, I suppose. So, there have been several attempts at putting together a branding for Raton, as I understand, relatively new to the city, but I'm finding out that this has been gone for a couple of times. And so, one of the things that's happened here recently is that we had another couple of public meetings where we talked about bringing up this idea of branding, to help grow the city and to help market and talk about how we can entice people to not only move here as individuals, but also as businesses. And so, we wanted to give you an update on how this came to be and kind of where we're at with this right now. So, talk specifically about our process here, and I'll try and keep this short, because I know we've got a full docket here. But as I mentioned, we did have two public meetings, and in those two public meetings, we asked people to write down all of the things that they thought were important about Raton, the things that we thought would draw people and businesses to this area. We also got input via email and Facebook on those same topics. And then we had a number of meetings every couple of weeks. So we collected all this information, we put this on, on cards, and then this group of people here, which is 10 of us, including three advisory committee members, sat down for meetings, and we went through all of the information and began to sort through the things that were important to this community, the things that we felt we have as assets here to help draw people in. This was facilitated also by Robin Bobine, who is kind of a state professional with, or a national professional with Main Street. And so, out of this meeting, we have had a lot of progress, and one of the things that came up is we sifted through all of the different words and concepts that came out of this, and this is kind of the key words that came out of these meetings. And so, when we think about Raton, we think about melting pot, fusion, history, culture, natural beauty, air, land, water, climate, wildlife. These are all the words that the community provided us with, that we sifted through and we thought were important. So, opportunity, whether it's business or individual, we felt like this is an affordable area, that the people are friendly, we've got a good cost of living here. We've got good family values, very simple, down-to-earth, and probably the most important thing was this unique location and being a gateway, not only to the west, but to the three major cities that, and states that we take people to, Colorado, Texas, and of course, New Mexico, as well as Arizona, if that matters. But one of the main focuses that we came across here was the Pass. When you think about bringing up Raton to people who don't live here, and we say the words "Raton," one of the things that comes up is, "Oh, I know where that's at. I drove over that pass. I spent some time there. I got stuck there." Whatever the issue was, Raton Pass always comes up to people from outside of this area. And so, from that, we wanted to play off of this concept of the Pass. But one of the things that we focused on was coming up with this brand essence statement here. So I'm going to read this briefly, because this is really our guiding principle on, on how we came up with this concept and where we're headed moving forward. So, "Raton Pass is your pass to your next adventure. Located at the base of the Raton Pass, the highest point along the historic Santa Fe Trail, Raton is a small town tucked away in the foothills of the San Gucristo Mountains in the northeast part of New Mexico. Raton sits at a perfect distance for access to regional fund while being enough, far away enough from the hectic lifestyle of bigger cities. Many travelers enjoy our amenities and the ease of being at a crossroads between New Mexico, Texas, and Colorado. Residents love the perks available in this small town, coupled with just the right amount of activities and historic, and history to enjoy this rich, full life. With four seasons, clean air, crystal waters, Raton's amazing climate and beautiful vistas create fantastic living environment. Wildlife and public lands call to outdoor enthusiasts. As a hometown fusion of cultures forged from our mining history, historic and cultural sites and activities offer unique experiences for visitors and residents alike. Our simple pace of life and affordable living are attractive to many retirees. Our horizon of business potential spans our safe, friendly town. Raton is wide open. It's a place to relax. Stay a day, stay a week, or a lifetime, Raton is your pass." So, this whole concept of Raton, your pass, if we go back to these key words for a minute here, one of the things that came out of that whole concept of our brand essence statements and our guiding light was this idea of Pass. And so, if you've got Raton Pass as part of your thing, what if we said something like "Raton, your pass to each of these things." Your pass to the melting pot, to the fusion, to the culture, to the history, your pass to beauty, your pass to opportunity, your, your pass to your next adventure. And so, the concept is pretty simple, however, we also felt like it was very effective when it comes to the marketing. And so, one of the things that we're hoping to market this to is "Raton, your pass to," and then being able to add in these taglines, whether that's your gateway, whether that is your natural beauty, any of these things, we've got a lot of opportunity to add in a lot of different things here. And so, in addition to that, we've also added in these color palettes, and we came up with that based on some of just the natural sights that you see here every day, and I don't have a great picture of all these things, but if you look at the natural color and beauty of just our city, that was the natural palette that we kind of came up with to kind of go along with this. And so, our ask at this point is that number one, we adopt this slogan as part of our city's overall marketing plan and our overall program here. So, "Raton, your pass." So that's kind of the first thing that we need to get done, is make sure that we're on board with this concept. And having had multiple opportunities to go through this idea of branding here, rather than sit and wait, we're hoping for acceptance and adoption on that tonight. Step two, though, is also, we need to get a little approval here for some money. What we'd like to do is get quotes on the logo and a style guide, put together with those colors, with this concept, so that we can start moving forward. We've got billboards that are coming due, we've got marketing opportunities that exist out there, and there are no less than seven different economic development groups that would like to be able to brand this together and begin to unify and come together on this. So this is really what, what our ask is right now, is we'd like to get approved for a thousand bucks to get this going. Our next step as a group is to continue working on the implementation of this plan. So, obviously. So obviously, continue to market this, get this out to the groups where it's gonna be meaningful, get this out on the billboard, those kinds of things, but more importantly, communicate this concept to the overall community, get everybody behind this idea. And then, of course, our big ask today is to get approval on the final for the logo and the guide tonight. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Barton?
I have no questions.
I'd just like to thank everyone who's been involved with the branding team. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone, and I know we'll continue to move forward with our big phased-out plan. So, just to add to what Devon's saying, if that's okay, so we have kind of a phase-one plan where we're working on some of these things, and we have a phase-two and three plan as we move forward for, with the marketing end of things, and hopefully we'll have a launch party in the future, you know, working with other organizations that are already working on wayfinding and what, and not, and just kind of getting those things together.
The biggest thing we'd hate to see happen is for this to be just another of those things that kind of gets put by the wayside, and we don't do something with it, and so, we're hoping for that approval tonight.
Well, that kind of steps us right in. Item C there, deliberate and act on funding proposal for City of Raton branding effort. So, any other questions, comments? Mr. Berry, you have any comments?
My comment would be, I didn't make all of these meetings, but I sat in some of these meetings. I think the committee has done a great job, really given us a direction to go forward with the branding. The most progress we've made, as Mr. Barton has said, we've had some meetings, preliminary type meetings before, didn't get very far, and now we're targeting, and so I think it's been a very effective process so far. I'm pretty enthusiastic about the outcome.
Yeah, I would echo that. I attended a branding presentation at the National League of Cities in Charlotte in November, and you've hit on a lot of their points. Make it concise, make it simple. And I like the "Raton, your pass," I like that a lot, it says it. Like you said, people know "Raton Pass." I'm in Charlotte, North Carolina, and the guy sees my sign, says, "I got stuck in that town one way," you know, so it is recognizable, so I commend you guys for your work.
Definitely something unique, even from Trinidad, while we share the same area, the same climate and those things, that's our pass, it's not theirs.
Absolutely.
There's some reason, it's true.
There's some argument Fisher Peak should be Ratone Peak, actually, if you look in the history books. Yeah. Any other comments?
I think it's a good logo myself.
Yeah, I like it. Don't forget daddy and hunting and hiking and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you move on adopting, are you open to feedback from the public?
I think we would absolutely like some feedback from the public. Sure.
We had the pleasure of having Devon present this information at a Rotary meeting this afternoon, or this noon, and one of the oldest members talked about what's happened to the concept of the gateway, and Devon was talking about how the gateway is used by a number of different cities. I think that the branding team is right on identifying "Raton Pass" as that unique aspect of our living here that we can market. However, the phrase "Raton, your pass, too," doesn't make sense grammatically, and what the suggestion was from a member of our group was to change that from "Raton, your pass" to "Raton Pass, your gateway, too." And I just wanted to mention that.
I would like to point out at that session I was at, one of the words they said you want to avoid these days is "gateway" or "gate." They said that is saying you're getting locked into something and you're not able to explore the area and that. So that's something I would pass on, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Jenkins, but I like the conciseness of what we have right now, too. Jessica?
Jessica, very quickly, as part of the branding committee, I did just want to mention that gateway is part of that brand essence statement that we read, and although that's not necessarily something the public is going to see, it's something that drives your brand. So the "Raton Pass," you know, "Raton, your pass" is not like the one and only thing we're gonna see, it's something that can be used in slogans, and that slogan can include gateway, that's not something that's out of the question. So I just wanted to...
Thank you, thank you.
I think, too, you know, sort of what we plan to do with this money is to also enhance this concept. I mean, these are pretty blocky letters and, you know, some of the things that we've got here, but the idea is that once we actually bring in a designer and add that to that, I think we're gonna get a number of variations off of this that are gonna be very marketable to anybody who would like to add gateway to that.
Sure.
Plus, I might add that adding in the ellipses with the dot-dot-dot, that's not grammatically incorrect to say "your pass, too." Is that correct, our author in the, author editor?
That's correct.
Grammatically correct is overrated when you're talking about marketing anyways. It really is.
Yeah.
Alrighty, any other discussion?
I'd especially like to thank Robin Bobian from Main Street, New Mexico Main Street, thank you, because she, you know, we are the pilot project for her to be able to even come and do this, so they were willing to take a risk for her to reach out to them and try to help an entire community and not just a Main Street brand, and she's been integral in this process, guiding us through it, and I do feel like we've had a great deal of community input with the different meetings and sources, and so, you know, this is what our team has come up with, and we feel strongly that it's a good option.
One question, Mr. Barton. On your phase-one here, it says between $5,000 and $8,000, but you said specifically you'd like $1,000 to get started.
This will get the logo and the style guide going, which are the colors and the fonts and those kinds of things, so that we can actually come back and say, "Okay, here's what we've decided on." And then, this next phase will be more along the lines of, okay, the launch party that goes on, getting this set up for billboard, getting this set up for print, and then distributing it out to all of the different economic development groups that are in need of this kind of branding.
Alright. So then, I would take, we are considering $1,000 tonight initially.
I'd make a motion that we award the $1,000 to the branding committee and leaving the logo as it is.
I'll second.
I like the conciseness of it, and I, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the proposal, the logo as is, and awarding $1,000 to proceed. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote? Michael Lamb, please.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Mayor Segada?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item D, deliberate and act on event forums. We can take these individually, guys, or we can take them all at once. We've got the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, Raton Main Street Fourth of July Event and Parade on Historic First Street, St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Walk Run, and the Color Run. And if we have anybody from those events, if you'd like to get up and speak to your event, we will allow that, but looking through the information, it seems like all of them have the correct paperwork in that, so...
Mayor, Commissioner, I could just state that Emergency Services, Public Works, Traffic Control, we have reviewed all the events and provided our approval of the events and have extensive familiarity with organizers and the events.
We had one that didn't have the insurance, and that's been taken care of, correct?
Yes, we do have a certificate of insurance for the Color Run, so she did bring that by.
Okay. Any questions for any of these folks, or any other discussion?
I think a motion to approve the event forums for International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, Raton Main Street Fourth of July Event and Parade on Historic First Street, St. Patrick's, St. Joseph's Walk Run, and the Color Run.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event forums for the stated events. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. Item E, presentation by Center for Sustainable Community, New Mexico True Co-Op Grant, and Proposed Marketing Management Services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we do have representatives of the Center for Sustainable Community on hand tonight. They have asked to make a presentation, too, regarding a couple of initiatives that they have undertaken. This is a presentation that was provided to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board previously, and so I'd like to recognize Jessica and Jeff, and they would like to pursue their presentation, Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to provide you with this letter and some more information in case you did not have it in your pocket, for us to review. So, this is the very first time I've actually had the opportunity to talk to the commission about our grant proposal that we did for New Mexico True. So I wanted to talk you through a little bit of the process and then talk to you about what we were awarded. So, whenever I found out the New Mexico True Co-op advertising period was open, I put together kind of a small committee to look at coing after some grant money for the City of Raton. And so, we had the Raton Chamber, Raton Main Street, and Jared Chatterley on this committee. He is a member of the Northeastern Regional Marketing Board, to talk about what might be right whenever it comes to Mexico True, the New Mexico True Program and Raton. So, just a brief, very brief overview here, I wanted you to understand, because this is kind of something we haven't been participating in for a couple of years, how it works. So there's two different types of grants. There is a Media Menu Program Grant, they call it the MMP Grant, and then a Flex Grant. And that MMP Grant is basically pre-negotiated advertising that cities can pay to be part of. And the Flex Grant is basically us asking for money on initiatives that we do, separate of what has been negotiated. So, just a couple of key considerations that the committee worked on together. The grant cycle that was open is actually for the fiscal year of 2019. So what we're looking at, we'll start as of July 1st and go through June 30th. The New Mexico True Partner Grants are very competitive. In fact, this year, there was over 29 communities that bid on one of the projects that we were awarded. I was very lucky to be able to go to Riodoso, to the New Mexico Tourism Conference, about two weeks ago. Rebecca Latham actually called me and said, "I need you there. I'd really like you to come, like, are you gonna come? Because I've seen what you're doing." And we had a really great conversation about what's been happening in Raton whenever it comes to marketing and tourism. And then I found out she really wanted me there, so she can talk to me a little bit about the grant that we won, which is what we're gonna talk to you about today. And just so you know, that whenever we sat down, we looked at quite a few different options whenever it comes to marketing. Some of the buys that we could do as a partner ranged from $2,200 all the way up to $16,000. And so, we were really trying to figure out how to get a program, grant that would be effective for Raton, but not too much for the first year of getting back into this. And so, what we did is, and we got approval for, this was the most competitive part of our grant, was actually a New Mexico True Texas Monthly Media Buy. And I meant to pass this around here. I was able to pick up a New Mexico month, excuse me, the Texas Monthly, April 2019 edition that has a New Mexico feature in here. You can kind of take a look at what they did for the 2019 spread this year, and Raton now has the ability to be featured in this. We will be getting a full-page display ad in the middle of Texas Monthly, as well as an advertorial about our region. It'll be about two to three paragraphs. You can look and see kind of what Riodoso did and the Santa Fe County, those were the two recipients last year. And part of this grant means that New Mexico True will pay for $4,200, just over $4,200 of it, and they're asking Raton to pay $4,287 to be part of this. Just so you know, the second part of this grant actually was auctioned off live. They do a live auction for partners that go to these tourism conferences, and it went for over 18 grand. So, we got kind of a still on winning this grant, it was very competitive. And I know other communities were wondering, you know, what's Raton got going on, and I got a lot of questions about that, which made me pretty happy. And so, this is something that I'd like for us to consider being a part of. The money would be due on December 10th of 2018, so it would be due December of this year, and it would be printed in April. They have not only, it's over 300,000 of these Texas Monthly's mailed out directly to households across Texas, but there's quite a few that they print for general distribution as well. In addition to being in the actual magazine, we will be featured in an email blast that goes out to over 3 million people. It's a really big amount of visibility for our town and a really great opportunity. The second part of the grant that I went after was something that we've traditionally done anyway, radio is something that's been part of our advertising efforts. I asked for $2,500 to help with radio, and then something a little new that'll be a part of a different presentation I'm doing as well, but $2,500 to spend on social media marketing, Facebook, Instagram, possibly even Pinterest, we've already got kind of some things going on there I'll tell you about, but we've never dedicated any money to actually reaching out on social media. So this kind of gives us the ability to put $2,500 in the pot and see what we can do, because the state will pay the other $2,500. So, the overall cost for Raton will be $5,000, and we'll receive $5,000 from the state if this is approved for our efforts. And so, we're looking at a total of just under $10,000 in money for the state, and, you know, we're putting about the same up, but it's a really good opportunity for us to get some visibility. So, what would happen next would be, if this gets approved, I'll sign a contract with New Mexico True, and part of the Texas Monthly grant is we actually will be able to work with the Tourism Department on Development. They'll send someone out here and we can figure out exactly what we wanted to say about Raton and what that's going to look like. And then the second part would be to ensure that the city budgets at least $2,500 for social media and at least $2,500 for radio, so we can get that Flex Grant money, you know, back for the 2019 fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
I know I gave you a lot of information fairly quickly. This has been a project that we've been involved and worked on probably for about four months. The grant process was over about a month ago, and this was just awarded within the last three weeks. They want a quick turnaround. I actually had to ask for an extension. I only got this approval letter, as you can see, May 4th, and they wanted the approval as of Friday. I was able to get them to extend that until after our meeting. Sorry for your consideration.
Mr. Berry, do you have any comments?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would say that some of the comments that we've got as far as marketing Raton is that Texas is obviously a marketplace for us, and that's a place we want to be, so I think that addresses this. In regard to social media, I'm thinking Facebook is just a fad that's gonna pass, but everybody else seems to be really serious about it, so it seems like a good thing, so...
So...
The presentation has been reviewed by Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and so it comes to the commission now. We do have a spot for your consideration, your deliberation in the next item. Mayor?
So I'm understanding that basically the grant's approved as long as we approve the match?
Exactly, and if we do not approve the grant, then it just kind of goes back to the next person in line. So it's ours first to pass on.
Right.
I'd really hate to do that, because I know how competitive it was, and if we pass, I'm not sure we'll get another chance to hit the spin market.
Right.
No, and I think it meets a lot of the criteria for Lodger's tax monies, so... Any other comments, questions?
I had a conversation with one of our local businessmen, and since I'm such a fossil and I still have a snap phone, and I believe that we have to...
Flip phone, that.
Well, whatever. But I'm not on help or yelp or whatever, so... But really, it's the coming of the future, and we have to get aboard. We have to. I'm not saying that you don't need the printed and the radio also, but I think that we need to get on board with the media, with the social media, I really do. And I was pointed that out by the colleague I talked to.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'm very excited about this.
I just wanna say, Way to Go for going after this. And what an awesome thing that everyone wants to know what we're up to, so you've just done a great job, both of you guys. And I think in our packets, this one is actually the second one that's in there. Either they're out of order or they're...
Well, we're... This was the presentation, and we're gonna come up next on the deliberation and action.
I think this is the...
Oh, there's also a second.
She has a second presentation that we're actually...
Proposal presentation.
It's flipped. Just so we're clear what we're voting on. We're actually in the New Mexico True Co-op Grant instead of the Proposed Marketing Management Services. That's the second.
Yes.
So, would this be fiscal year, next fiscal year?
Right, 2019. I will have to abstain from this vote, given that I'm on the Center for Sustainable Community Board.
If there's no other discussion during the presentation, we can move to Item F and start deliberating on these Lodger's Tax recommendations. And at the top of the list is the Center for Sustainable Community and New Mexico True Co-op Grant. That's a mouthful. Any other further comments for Jessica or Jeff?
I guess I would have one question, Mayor. Is the Center for Sustainable Community, is that the signatory to the grant agreement?
Yes, unfortunately. So, the way they work it out is they have mandatory webinars that I didn't realize were mandatory webinars. And for it to have been with the city, we would have needed the city to sit in on those. So, it'll actually have to be signed by me, but billed to the city. It's a very, I have the contract for you to review. It's three pages and pretty straightforward. Basically, if they don't give our money, they just don't, you know, give us our advertising.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is that gonna be an issue?
Well, I'll just look at our treasurer and ask if that's a workable contract situation for us.
Okay. Even if they have to invoice us, and however that's gotta work, we can figure that out.
Any other comments, questions?
Do you want to vote separately or talk together?
Probably, we're gonna go through these separately, Commissioner. I think we've got representatives from all of these, so I'd like to hear from you.
And I just wanted to make note, I don't mind waiting till after the deliberation, but these are actually two separate things. We did two separate proposals and two separate presentations to Lodger's Tax Board. I think they got put together on this agenda, so we do have something else to talk about whenever you feel it's appropriate.
Okay, so the Marketing Management should have been under the recommendations from the Lodger's Tax as well, or not?
Yes, it was passed, yes, it was voted on and approved for, I'd like to pass on to you as well.
I think, Mayor, unfortunately, we have the Co-op Grant listed for deliberation in action.
Okay.
We do not have the Marketing Management Services on that list for action.
So, that was our misunderstanding, and that's why Robin didn't include the media part.
Right, and if we don't get to actually vote on the marketing services today, I understand, but I would like to present it to you so that you have some ideas you want to...
Yeah, I think we definitely wanted you to present it, but as far as a vote, I think we misunderstood that the Lodger's Tax Board was passing it jointly to the Commission.
It's got very long.
Very long, that's why I'm trying to remember.
I would have to review the minutes from that meeting, so...
Either way.
Well, it is listed under the presentation, so...
Yes, we did want the Commission to see the presentation.
We can't see the presentation right now, if you'd like to do that.
Would you like that now, or would you like to vote first or something?
What's the pleasure of the Commission?
Let's look at it now.
Let's look at it now?
Yes, it was under Item E.
Yeah. Okay.
Here's this from your packet. I think you might have...
Oh, thank you. That's nice for you, though.
This is just a written summary of the presentation. Let's see. Walk through the marketing services. I think what we'd like to do before we get started is we'd like to introduce a new resident to Rattoum, a good friend of Jessica's, Patrick, who's helping us at the center. Patrick does marketing for, does Google AdWords for, he's at the center, kind of co-working with us for the next number of months. And he's a big help, got us started with Google AdWords, and now he's here to kind of kick it to the next level with us. We just wanted Patrick to introduce himself, give just kind of a little hello.
Okay.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here and to address the Commission. As Jeff said, I'm a brand-new resident to the Rattoum area. I just moved here from Tucson within the past week. And I'm very happy to be working with the Center for Sustainable Community. I'm actually doing this on a pro bono basis, but I believe in what they're doing, and I'm very glad to cooperate, to impact the community. A little bit about my background. I've been working in marketing for almost 10 years now. I've been working primarily with nonprofits. These are all very large nonprofits with a national and international presence, from revenues of $5 million a year on down. Many of them also have a global television presence as well. I specialize in direct mail and social media marketing, in email marketing, and also paid social media, including AdWords and Facebook ads, which has been discussed here with the Commission today, as well as website development, which is also directly relevant to Rattoum 2.0, the website. You know, like I said, this is a cause I believe in, and I support wholeheartedly. It's a pleasure to work with the Center and to hopefully be a positive impact on the community. I also want to say the community's been very welcoming to me.
Good to hear.
Good.
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you.
And what was your name again? We just got your first name.
Patrick Brown.
Patrick Brown, thank you.
So, we'll kick off our presentation for the Marketing Management Proposal. This is sort of our plan for the next fiscal year, the services that we like to do. And I would like to kick it off with a big acknowledgement for this woman right here, who is just the brainchild behind this next development of marketing services, and she always amazes me with the depth of her skills and knowledge, and I think she's got some great ideas to present to you all tonight, so...
It's a group effort. I'd like to take all of it, but thank you. So, we thought we'd start off by talking about what we're already doing for the city. As you all know, within the last eight months, we have taken over and redone ExploreRattoum.com. And we, along with that, have brought to the table the $10,000 a month in Google AdWords advertising through our grant. And it was approved at $2,000 a month stipend for managing ExploreRattoum.com and our $10,000 in Google AdWords. That started about six months ago. That is up for renewal again on July 1st, and so that's something that we wanted to talk to you about. But really, we wanted to talk about what the current services you're actually getting are and kind of the impact that we've made so far over the last six to eight months. So, as I just mentioned, ExploreRattoum.com used to actually come to the .gov site, it used to tell you where to pay your utilities. Now, it tells travelers where to go and what they can do whenever they come to Rattoum, so it's been rebranded for tourism. And starting in June of 2017 is when we brought our Google Grant onboard. Since we launched that, we've had 1.56 million people see ads about Rattoum, New Mexico. Over 72,000 people have gone to ExploreRattoum and seen our website. That amounts in over $106,000 worth of Google AdWords spent on behalf of Rattoum. But, you know, we have all of these people. We have over 72,000 people that have gone to our website, but what are they doing is the next question. How do we know what impact that we're making? And we're working on that. One of the things that we did do is we implemented JackRabbit.
Yes, this was a kind of a brainchild of Lori about, there's this dynamic in the hotel industry where a lot of these hotels pay heavy commissions to the Expedia.coms and so forth. And JackRabbit is a company out of Santa Fe that has created this direct booking little widget. So, now people can come to the ExploreRattoum website and book their hotels, rooms directly with the hotel property, rather than going through an Expedia.com. So, we got this started late October 2017, and it slowly gained traction to where now we have almost 200 hotel rooms booked through this little widget. And so, we kind of picked a conservative number to put a number to this. I think $15 is probably a low number, the amount of commission they actually have to pay these guys. So, that's almost three grand of money that's staying in the community and not going to the Expedia.coms. And I think this is, of course, over the winter, right? This isn't even the summer that's coming. So, I think there's gonna be big benefits and dividends paid to our lodgers and community through this.
So, one thing that we just have talked about here is social media marketing, and I wanted to talk to you about things that we have done. So, you just talked about JackRabbit. One of the things that JackRabbit is able to do is allow people to actually book a hotel through Facebook, something that is new. This is something that wasn't, it's definitely new to Rattoum, and it's actually fairly new to JackRabbit itself. It's been doing it for about the last year. So, I couldn't see us having, you know, the ability to book on our website, but not having a way to utilize a tool that we're paying for on Facebook, so we launched a Facebook page. We have about just under 200 people that follow us on Facebook right now. We've never spent a penny to get those followers, and to be honest with you, this is something that I just kind of undertook on the side because I saw a need. That said, small 200 people, I've been growing it very quietly because I want content to be there when we have the money to push this out. But you can see, I shared an article about how Rattoum made a list of underrated towns that deserve a second look, and over 2,500 people saw that. So, that's something that I posted for free and something that was shared by people, you know. So, there is a lot of value to social media and grassroots efforts, and we're hoping to continue that.
So, with the budget getting from New Mexico True, there's that little boost post button. So, that's where you can monetize this, add a little income to this, and then it gets pushed into people's feeds.
Right, so even if you're not a friend with someone who's liked this, you would see it if we said, "We want to spend $20 for more people to see this information about Rattoum," and pick, you know, a certain amount or demographics of people that we want to see it, and they'd be able to see some of the posts that we use. In addition to Facebook, Instagram and Facebook are kind of hand-in-hand right now. We have actually, since I took this post, I was kind of excited. We had 220 followers. Not a lot, but it is a lot for me, because this has been something that I've been growing over the last few months. The hardest part about marketing is having photos to use, good photos, because something is not always better than nothing. And so, over the last few months, I've developed relationships with local photographers. Glenn Madalini literally brings me photos on the weekly, and these are professional photos that I can use. Bernadine Barala over at the Best Western allows me to use her great wildlife photography. I just talked to Tim Keller today, and we're going to meet. He's given me the right to use some of his pictures as well. And this is something that we are doing, we're getting for free because we have people that believe in the community, but we're giving them and help what to use, and I really think this could grow into something great. And so, this is also something that we just undertook on the side because we saw the need for the community. I think it's really important to mention, you know, I said that we made this New Mexico True Committee that worked on the New Mexico True Grant. I'm on the Rattoum Main Street Board. I'm trying to help Brenda with some of the marketing there. We kind of partner there. I handle the Schuler Theaters Facebook page, is something that I've been working with. Brenda Rattoum will be putting on a presentation later. I help them with website development. I know you've had conversations with Dee. Jeff has talked to Dee, and we've kind of gotten that as well, you know, mine there. Parks and Rec, Jared does events, and he has said that he is excited to see what we're doing. And then, although Lori's done a lot of the work, we are also working on with this Summer of Color to make sure that gets pushed out on ExploreRattoum and branded right. And so, over the last little less than a year, we've worked really hard to see how we can make an impact in the community through partnering with others as well.
Okay, so let's march into the 2019 proposal. There's sort of two elements to this. One is what happens next with the ExploreRattoum website. We're calling it ExploreRattoum 2.0. And then, so much of that is just building upon what we've done in the past. And then the next part, the marketing media management, this is new stuff. This is new management stuff for media outlets and advertising. So, ExploreRattoum 2.0, the website redesign. When we started ExploreRattoum to begin with, that was something that we took that move fast, don't wait for perfect. We launched that in about 30 days, and we pretty much stuck with that template. Now, we have a lot to work with. We've got Summer of Color to work with, we've got the new brand and the style guide that's coming out. All of that needs to get incorporated into the next website. We've got lots of ideas to add more content, itineraries, et cetera. So, all that's part of what we're just calling ExploreRattoum 2.0 that we'll start working on pretty soon.
Can you elaborate on the itineraries, just the tab?
Oh, the detailed itineraries. So, this is, I've been going to a lot of tourism conferences lately, and there's this whole trend in tourism about really being specific about your visitor. On day one, if you're a history buff, you need to go here and here and have lunch here, and then go here and here. And it is formulaic if you go to all the New Mexico True sites, the website and the enchilada trail and all these different things. This is something we don't have, and we need to have, our little micro-tours for our community. So, we have lots of ideas, and we'll be rolling those out with a new website.
And then we get to this new media marketing part of things, and we really want to ensure that Rattoum has an actual marketing strategy. As you all know, I did sit on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board for a while, and what I recognized is that we're very reactive. And although we are doing some great things and working with some great partners, you know, we need to make sure that every dollar we spend is being leveraged to have the most bang for its buck, you know? And so, that's something that we want to make sure that we're working towards. Kind of like I said, planned versus reactive. In Rattoum, we have a lot of signature events that we have yearly. We know a lot, what a lot of them are. If you go to the ExploreRattoum website, you're gonna see a lot of the events that happen annually. That's something we push out on Google AdWords year-round. It's not something that we advertise like a month before. We advertise all the time, because these events are going, they're part of our community, the part of why we want people to come here. And so, having more of a planned versus reactive approach to marketing is very important to ensure that we get people here.
The other part of this that we want to focus on is the who part. I think in the past, we've taken a very kind of a shotgun approach to marketing, and we haven't really said our target customer lives in Amarillo, and these are the media channels, and this is how we're gonna reach them. And how are we gonna measure that? So, using some of the more sophisticated marketing tools, we can get more of a rightful approach rather than a shotgun approach, and that's part of this media management bundle that we're proposing. The other thing is about the marketing media. So, similar to like the shotgun approaches, we've got the media contents we can go after. Is it radio? Is it print? Is it Facebook, social media, what have you? We have a lot of different events going on with lots of different groups and no coordinated strategy. And with, now with having a Summer of Color and having a brand and having content, let's get people under the same tent where we have a coordinated effort to market our events to outside communities.
So, this is kind of where we get to the how, and I know this is gonna bring a lot of questions and probably a lot of conversation, especially after you have time to mull all of this over, but we would like to become a marketing hub for Rattoum. What does that mean? A lot. At a very high level, you know, the city, Lodger's Tax and the Commission set a budget every year for radio, print, and, you know, all marketing. There's a bunch of different line items. And we dole that out in small amounts. We spend $5,000 on radio here and there. What if we actually put together $10,000 and went to, say, Clear Channel, where they have markets in Texas, they have some in Colorado, they have some in Oklahoma, and we say, "If we spend $10,000, how many free advertisements are you gonna give us?" Like, how much can we actually leverage if we do a bigger buy than all of these little buys? Because we don't necessarily have to change the partners that we're using, it's just the way that we're doing our buys. Like, for instance, we do some of our local buys that way, like KRT and KCRT, they know what they get for a year. But if we're advertising up to Colorado Springs, down to Santa Fe, over to Amarillo, I think those are one-off buys, and I definitely think we can make our money go further if we collaborate and we figure out exactly how much money we're gonna spend with these outlets each year and negotiate. And then, take those negotiations, bring them back to the Board for approval. I never want to have the final say on any of that. That would always be on you. But go back out, meet with these event planners, meet with all the organizations and the stakeholders, and have, to begin with, one very targeted strategic meeting to figure out what we need to do for 2019, and then have quarterly meetings to figure out what's coming up that needs to be advertised and where we need to reach. And do it together in a way that makes sense. I think the first year would probably be a lot of work and the second year we know what we're doing. We'd have a little bit more of an idea, but I think it's a really good place to start.
So we've just outlined, just really quickly, a few quick steps. It's really about figuring out what the budget is, how much money has been spent in the past. There are some fixed contracts maybe with some of the local radio stations, et cetera. But there's all these little, the little events that come to Lodger's Tax and we need, we're going to, we want this much money and we're going to use a hundred dollars here, $500 there for advertising. Let's get all of this under one, one line item or one review and figure out what the overall budget is. Then the center can come up with a strategy for that, go out and try to get some initial quotes, come back to Commission to say, this is what this looks like. How do we move forward?
And it's really small up there, but it does, it does state there. We don't want to touch the money that we use for events. We need events to promote. All we're looking at is the promotion dollars.
Right.
To make sure that we're getting, like I said, the most bang for our buck. So that comes back to the investment. So what we're, what we're asking for is the continuation of our website development and maintenance as well as the Google AdWords management. That's $2,000 a month that we've gotten and we'd like that to continue. But as I've done social media over the last six months, I know how much time it takes. I also have done radio. I was in radio for 10 years, worked for Journal Broadcast. I've done media buys. I understand what it takes to negotiate these contracts and make it happen, but at least 15 hours a week is what we're going to be spending. And so we're asking for $900 a month. That's at $15 an hour. And I know that cost consideration is something that's kind of important.
Maybe given the length of the meeting and yet to be on the agenda and we'll probably have to come back and do this, we have some justifications and other discussions to back this up. So maybe we can just close now since we'll have to come back and let the meeting move on.
And consideration.
We've got a joint meeting on the 12th.
But that's kind of what we'd like you to think about until I guess next time when we can vote on what we're doing. Do you have any feedbacks or feedback or things that you'd like us to consider or work on before the next meeting?
I think you guys have bugged Scott's office because Scott and I have had a conversation about some of this that you're talking about. So kudos to you. I mean, impressive.
Mayor, I would just state that we had talked about a joint meeting with Lodger's Tax Advisory Board and Commission and I think it's important that we have a lot of our community partners here. It's tough to get everybody together and, and that's been, you know, very difficult to do over the years. We like to, you know, have really annual training where we all kind of understand the statutes regarding Lodger's Tax and, and then establish a plan. And as stated, veer away from being reactive, but operate from a well thought out plan in which we have a consensus. And so that's been a little challenging to set up, but I, in talking to Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, they did ask me to come back to you all and propose June 12th. That's, we would have a Commission meeting scheduled at 6 o'clock. And they thought that if we got together about 4:30, we would have enough time to do some planning. And so I want to see if that's something the Commission would like to do. We'll set that up. We'll try to notify everybody that's in this game. And obviously the world is changing pretty quickly with how you would market your community. And we'll talk about economic development later, but specific to tourism, things are much different now than they are 20 years ago. I was just kidding about the Facebook. I get it. So I think it's timely that we have a strategy meeting. I don't know if that's allows enough time, but obviously something very different for us. I don't know that it's very different because some years back, we had the Soul Source and, you know, just have some familiarity with that as far as scheduling promotion, but it's packaged entirely differently. So I think we have a lot to talk about there, but if you all like the 12th, we will set that up.
I like the 12th. Okay. Any other comments on what we just saw? That was pretty impressive, myself. Very good. Very good. Thank you guys. Okay. We're going to move on to F now and.
Make a motion on the first one that they presented?
You got it. Okay, we're on the first ones. Item F is deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax recommendations and the first one which we've already seen the presentation, we've had a little discussion is the Center for Sustainable Community for the New Mexico True Co-op Grant. Was there any other questions for Jessica or Jeff on that?
I did want to just clarify one thing I noticed on here. It says available funds, print, advertising, parks and rec with remaining out of contingency. We do not have any funds available in the print, advertising or the parks and rec. So it would all need to come out of contingency.
Would the co-op grant be for the next fiscal year or would it start in this fiscal year?
Well, Jessica did say that it would all come out of next fiscal year. So was that the actual recommendation of the board? Print, Parks and Rec and contingency? A combination of those three line items?
The which?
Print, advertising, parks and rec and the remaining? You did want to chop it up?
To make it all come.
Okay. Because it is coming out of next fiscal year's budget. So I mean, we can make it work to come out of one line item or create.
Just for looking at the numbers from this year.
Or we could create a new, a new line item if we need to specifically for that, so.
The detail I think Michael Ann can handle.
I'll make a motion to approve the Center for Sustainable Community, New Mexico True Co-op Grant request for $9,287.
Could you have a comment, Michael Ann?
I was just going to say we could approve the amount under this action item and then when we get to the actual budget changes, we can work out exactly what line item we want to budget it in.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the New Mexico True Co-op Grant. Is there any further discussion? In favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Could you repeat who made the second?
Commissioner Jacomo.
And I abstained.
Okay. Item number two is the Run to Rattone Bike, Trike and Classic Car Show, July 19th through the 23rd. We have someone who would like to address the Commission on that.
Mayor Commission, I'll just kind of introduce this. I think this is, we have some folks on hand representing the Run to Rattone. I think last year was the initial year for this event. I think it was successful. We saw a number of people that traveled from some distance. Mr. Rodman here on hand, he had constructed a tricycle, I believe, and that was a giveaway. And I think the plan is to do that again and that really attracted a lot of people. And I think this is an event that really has a lot of room to grow for Rattone and become a big event. But we do have some representatives on hand from organizers of the event.
All righty. Welcome.
Thanks for looking over those packets and just kind of, you know, we added some pictures in there and there's some, we had some people that signed in, you know, as they came through our building last year. Let's see if we can kind of get a number of some out of town people that were coming through. And, you know, looked to be around 200 to 250 people that came and they stayed actually for the weekend. And this year we're expecting possibly double that. And we've added a date to the event and we're trying to add some entertainment for the two days that we're going to be here with. The first day that we, we have a plan that we added, that's out of cold beer and that's all taken care of. And so that's what we're doing. We're trying to get some more things going on for these people to do over the two day event. And kind of consolidate it there at the area of Clark and Third Street by the Courthouse and just kind of use that area, you know, for the event.
For the staging and that. Have you guys put together any kind of like day trips for these folks to consider?
Yes, there's, so we, there's one for sure that Independent Riders, they're doing a day ride on the Saturday. And then what we, what we did last year is as everybody was getting there, we would talk about, we had some maps and stuff that we were handing them and everybody just kind of made their own groups. So they can, you know, nothing was so organized where they're just like, hey, they can just kind of look at it and go explore for themselves.
And that's what I'm thinking, just suggestions or you can do this in this amount of time.
And that was really the way this kind of started. There's just, you know, 100 miles in any direction, there's all this cool stuff to do here. That was the idea.
It's the perfect hub for riding out.
Sure.
And for people who aren't riding, for the, for the non-biker community, Jason and I are organizing the car show. We had 51, 51 entries last year. Yeah, we had 51 entries last year, not just in Rattone, from neighboring states as well. I ran the pinup contest. I had 17 entries. This is huge for the first ever pinup contest.
Scott's the winner, eh?
Scott was the winner. You looked a little different that day. Actually, Ms. Jenny Bockham-Elst, who's up here in Rattone, was the winner. So I've already had a lot of interest in that. That's already fully funded. I've got sponsors for that locally. The car show is going to be fully funded. And what we're really looking for is tape bands. We're having six bands total this year. Our headline band is the Derailers out of Austin, Texas. They have quite a following, so we're expecting a lot of people just to come by virtue of them being here. As far as promotions, most of you know, a big online person, not a big print or billboard kind of person. Jessica was talking about her numbers and social media. This guy right here, I don't want to embarrass him, but just on his personal Instagram account has 15,000 followers. So that's huge. Maybe he's actually a celebrity. I don't, I'm embarrassed to say that. But a lot of, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But, but we are going to have a lot of people here due to that. We've got, we have a dedicated website that Jessica's set up for us and you're, I mean, if you haven't checked it out already, runto rattone.com. Look at that. That has our events listings on there and activities. Our sponsors are listed on there. We do have several local sponsors. We just need help with you guys mostly paying for the entertainment.
Yeah, and I'm all for the event. I think it's a great event to that. And that's where I'm having a little difficulty justifying the money for the bands from Lodger's Tax. You know, Lodger's Tax is very specific. That's where I'm having a little bit of an issue. I, I love the, the idea of the event. I think it's going to be something that we can grow into something huge. I'm just struggling with that and I've talked with Mr. Berry and some of my fellow commissioners and I'd just like to hear some of their opinions.
Well, I do and I discussed it with, with one of the participants and I, and I did say, it's kind of a gray area. But if these guys come here and there's nothing for them to do, they're not coming back. And I think like I told you, I said, you go to the rally in Red River, you can go two ways. You can go to Taos, Truquesta or back to Eagleness. That's all. Here you can go five directions. And so I think that we should just let the gray area stay and I think that we should support it.
Put that, put that in, right? Commissioner Chavez says let the gray area.
The numbers on the sign in sheet were really impressive and the number of nights that people are staying are really impressive and the amount of, you know, what you guys are putting into it, you know, $27,000 worth of stuff is just really impressive. So it's, I would hate to not support it, you know, not.
And that's where I'm at, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's how I feel as long as it's not too gray.
I think when Mr. Lemos and I came and talked to Mr. Berry and Mr. Sagata a few months ago, you know, we were, we were speaking about promotion. What is promotion? And the feeling I got from you guys was that the event itself is promotion for Rattone. So we cannot have the event without entertainment. The other thing I want to press upon you is that this, we're asking for this much this year. We're not going to come back every year and ask for the same amount or ask for more. We are working on growing this event. We're going to work on monetizing it. We don't want to have to keep coming to anybody for money. We want to bring people to Rattone. We want to make money for businesses in Rattone, give people something to do, put the city on the map. So this year, yes, we are asking for a pretty good chunk for entertainment. In the future, we are not planning on doing that.
So most of your promotion is through social media then for the event?
It is. Social media and then I've already attended a few events and I, there's, I have three more to go to before the event. One in the Midwest, one in Albuquerque and then Red River this weekend and have a booth and things of that sort handing it, handing out, we'll have, you know, paper, you know, just flyers with the itinerary and the logo and all that stuff. We're going to see if we can raise a little bit more interest that way. So it's really the social media and then those shows for me and we do have a little bit.
We do. We have some dedicated radio ads from the KCRT. I want to have it paid for those. You know, they do that thing every year where they raise money.
Right. And you do have some paper.
I do. My posters are out.
You have some paper.
Still working on that other one.
The other ones are coming shortly. And I was talking to, I don't know if any of you are familiar with New Mexico Nomad. There's, it's a website. It's a whole social media thing. She's got over 200,000 followers. And I was talking to her about it. She's going to start promoting it for us.
Mr. Berry, you have any comments?
Mayor, I would just reflect back on two years ago when we had Randy Van Black, Attorney for Municipal, come to Rattone and talk to us about the, you know, guidance as far as the statute regarding Lodger's Tax in general. And, you know, what I took from that is you really have a broad latitude in how you market and promote your town. Rattone is fairly unique. I think probably every community would, would market and promote their town a little differently, but I think you have a lot of latitude. And I think this kind of highlights the need to sit down and do the planning, but we're a little in front of that. So, you know, what I got from Attorney Van Black is if it puts heads in beds, it's Lodger's Tax. And so I think the Commission, you know, can use that guidance. I think a lot of you were present at that training by Randy. New Mexico Hospitality really has not offered that training in recent years. They're undergoing some staff changes as well. They had issued the Street Fighters Guide, which I think a lot of you have reviewed prior to coming here. And they told me that they were working on a new publication, but I think it would be similar to the Street Fighters Guide. But that would be my comment, Mayor, is that really I think we, we generally decide what's best in promoting Rattone with putting people in our restaurants and motels and you have some latitude there. I just would comment, I think as we go along, we, we're going to need to develop a game plan as just, as things change.
Yeah. I agree with that. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I'll move to approve recommending the $11,015 to be given to Run to Rattone for music, insurance, security promotional items.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Run to Rattone Bike, Trike and Classic Car Show for the specified amount. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good as you. You won't be stolen.
Okay. Write that down too.
Right. See to it.
Okay. Next one up is the Rattone Museum reconsideration of billboard and New Mexico Magazine ad. Mr. Berry, you want to set us up?
Mayor and Commission, we have present tonight some members from the board that governs the Rattone Museum. I think they would like to approach the Commission and make a presentation on several items regarding promotion of the museum. These are two items that were presented to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. And if I remember correctly, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board had tabled the item and asked for maybe a different combination of, of things to happen with the billboard and the New Mexico Magazine advertisement. things to happen with the billboard and the New Mexico Magazine advertisement. And so I think, well, there was some discussion about maybe a different format on the billboard or a different format on the magazine ad. I think that the museum would like to talk to you tonight about their specific proposal. So they are on hand, Mayor, and I will turn it back over to you.
All right. Kathy, would you like to give us a spiel?
Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to visit with you from your house. A couple of these are not included in your packet. These are the proposed ads. And I will make one statement on the New Mexico Magazine ad. There is one misspelled word that has been crafted. But when I printed these, it was still, still there, and I was running out of ink. If I could get the paper from these. I'll take this one. And I think as, first of all, I want to thank fellow board members Wayne Murtry and Sue Smith for being with us this evening, and also for the board that attended the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. I think, you know, first and foremost, we, as I stated on our cover letter, we respect the work that is done by the advisory committee and the job that's put before them. However, we feel that if the proposal that the museum made is warranted for lodger's tax funding through the promotional fund. What I'll do is just touch on a few things with you in regard to the billboard. The museum recognized the need to increase traffic and decided to take on an advertising initiative that we felt would help enhance promotions the city has already engaged in to revitalize the historic district as well as to increase the museum's visibility and role in our role of promoting diverse culture and history. One of the themes that we have adopted is turn right into history. And this campaign is included on the billboard, as you can see from the advertisement there, that are the printouts that I gave you in design. And we felt also that moving along the Burma Shade, the old Burma Shade kind of campaign and theme, was to also include wayfinder signs or banners that would be placed along. And those are smaller, really small, in four by four and the two by four. The four by four would be placed hopefully somewhere near the Welcome Center or the Tourist Information Center and the other one. And that one, the signage would read, "You're on the right track into history." And then when you get downtown, either hanging on the museum, a two by four sign or a banner, or in that 100 block of South Second, "History is right here." And I think, you know, again, playing up the fact that the city has throughout the last year really worked on trying to direct, and probably longer than that, traffic into our historic district, pulling, again, the Texas travelers down into our downtown so they're not churning and heading to Colorado or Santa Fe right away when they enter the, you know, the community. They gas up and they go. And I think, you know, the sign is located in a really prime location for us to help guide those people into our community. If you don't know where it is, it's just this side of the road that goes to the old dump. It sits up on the left-hand side. It's a stucco structure, and it's, you know, left-hand reef, facing west. So it does, you know, it is in a position where the people are having to slow down to 45 miles an hour. And again, we think that gives us a great opportunity to catch their attention and have the potential of over a million visitors into downtown based on the views and the traffic counts that were provided to us. So again, bringing in those intended westward travelers and lead them into our downtown community. The traffic counts that Landmark Outdoor Media gave us is daily 38.95. I think that's on the proposal information that you have. And monthly traffic of 106,850. So that's how it's going to have the potential for a million hits there. So on the billboard, that's where we're at. As far as New Mexico Magazine, they are running a feature, a feature article in the August issue, which will be released in about a month. Their issues, the June issue just came out last week. So it's about two weeks prior to that month. So their August issue will be coming out, and the Rattone Museum and our glass negative collection will be a featured article. It expands on the gift that was given to the museum from the Campbell family, as well as our memorandum of understanding with the Palace of the Governors Archive Division and how they've worked to digitize and clean those glass negatives and make them available for researchers and others that are interested in photographs of our area and New Mexico. So again, that will appear in the August issue. So we felt that it was really good timing to do an advertisement for the Rattone Museum and, again, direct people into our community for reasons other than just looking at the collection, but also the advertisement, as you can see, is advertising other programs that we will be hosting and having an event during the remainder of the year. So hopefully, that'll entice people to come back. The New Mexico Magazine, and just as a side note, that says "Our Colorful History," which, again, is Rattone playing into the Summer of Color theme. So that will be the advertisement that will be in that issue. New Mexico Magazine, you know, has 70,000 circulation, monthly 160 readers. I mean, everybody passes it around, keeps them, you know, a lot of people. And what they say is 87% of their readers plan two overnight trips in New Mexico per year with an average of eight nights. 85% visit the attraction as a result of reading an ad or the article. And 63% visit the advertiser's website. And as you can see on all of the media, our advertising promotional material that we presented, "Explore Rattone" is listed on it. So not only will they be seeing the museum's website, but also "Explore Rattone." So I stand for... Any questions? I mean, we, you know, respectfully ask that you reconsider our request and move forward.
Will you actually turn down or just postpone?
Actually, we were not postponed. We were tabled in May, and we were back this month. And it was suggested that we, that what they were planning on doing in the future is do billboard advertising, hopefully, you know, for us to be able to key into one of their contracts that are coming up versus doing what, you know...
Technically, if it's put off to another meeting, it's postponed rather than tabled, but that's a technicality in terms...
Well, it wasn't really. I mean, they did not say that they would reconsider it at the next meeting.
Oh, I see. So you really were tabled, which means, well, tabled would mean you would, it was dead in the water.
Commissioner, I think from my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but I think the action was to table it. However, I think there was an advisory board member that said, number one, in regard to the New Mexico Magazine ad, we might get a better deal by having, negotiating a longer term with them, and was interested in talking to New Mexico Magazine about a longer term in which, you know, maybe there's some additional advertisements going. And then I think on the billboard, this is not a Lamar billboard, but the suggestion was we have a contract, I think till August, on Lamar billboards, several number of Lamar billboards, and maybe we could combine it with Lamar. But this billboard was in a location that you all found desirable.
We thought it was strategic. Yes. And, you know, again, for stopping that traffic and making sure or guiding that traffic to downtown.
What kind of billboard is it?
Excuse me?
What kind of medium is the billboard? Is it the canvas cover or whatever?
It's the same skin like all of them. Aren't they? They're vinyl skins.
Well, I did see somebody painting in a different community, doing the old-fashioned painting type.
Yeah. Well, I think all of the billboards that Rattone contracts with are all vinyl billboards. And to Scott's point, it was suggested that maybe we could negotiate a cheaper price with New Mexico Magazine and ask that Jessica and I visit about that and see if that was possible. I did point out then, and I will point out now, that the ad, one-time ad for a half-page in New Mexico Magazine is $2830, $2,830. I was able to negotiate with them to a nonprofit price of $2,455. And in the discussion with Mr. Archuleta, saying if we bought 12 ads, what would that cost be? 12 ads are $2,300 a piece. So you've got $104 savings over what this actual procurement is.
And I think we've tried, I seem to recall, three or four years ago, maybe, maybe longer, aging as we said here. We tried to work a deal with New Mexico Magazine in the past over an event for six or seven months, and they weren't very cooperative. Not very cooperative at all.
Well, Jessica and I, you know, visited about it and looking at the numbers, saying, you probably, you have the best possible price you're going to get. And again, I think to your point, Mr. Berry, is, yeah, New Mexico Magazine has their rate structure, and they're not going to play outside of that.
And what is the deadline for that August issue coming up?
It is. It is here today.
Oh, today's the deadline. So are you missing it then, or...
No, we have until Friday.
Okay.
But I mean, the deadline officially is today, so we have until Friday. I have visited with the gentleman that represents this region.
And Mr. Berry, in your, what's the word I'm looking for? In your digging around today, you've come up with the price of the billboards are relatively the same, actually, right?
I believe that's true. Depends on where the billboard's located. So I think that with Lamar, you know, an I-40 billboard is probably around $400 a month. If it's, say, I think we have some maybe in the vicinity of Amarillo, might be in the 315, I think I remember. Now, there's the one billboard located in Rattone. It's kind of a bad, ugly billboard. I think we paid a hundred bucks on that one. And that's located on City of Rattone property. And we had talked about just demoing that billboard.
We have, yes.
But we did negotiate a cheap price on that one. So there's a range on it. I think it depends on where the location is, you know, the marketability of that particular billboard.
Well, if you travel across South Dakota ever and stop in it, wow, South Dakota, you know that billboards still work. Because there's not much there to see but fresh water and five-cent coffee. All advertised on billboards.
And I guess, Kathy, where I was having a problem earlier until I've heard the rest of the story, the billboard is, my understanding, the skin's already up?
Yes.
Yeah. And I was having trouble, why would we buy a skin without having the money forward? But now, hearing that you came to them previously, I don't know. I guess you had to act on it. Still, my wife doesn't like me to buy things without the money.
Well, you know, and to that, you know, the museum board felt and really assessed what we were looking to accomplish.
Sure.
And felt that we, of course, we hoped that we would be able to procure that in May and have this conversation prior to that going forward. But it didn't happen, so we, you know, made the determination that we would go forward and then come and hope that the commission would follow through on that.
Mayor, if I could offer some comments here, and I want to qualify these that I have not talked to my treasurer about this. But down the agenda, we're going to talk about some non-promotional items here. And I think I have talked to some of you that in the non-promotional, typically, we would use a big portion of that for debt service on our visitor center, more specifically. A lot of towns service debt on a convention center or project like that. And I would anticipate that we will, again, in the future. But we have not, we paid our debt off previously, and we've been accruing those funds. Now, I think that we risk, you know, bypassing Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. I think that's a dicey thing. I would suggest to the commission, and I would look at my treasurer, that we, you do have the option of considering the request with the non-promotional. You do have other non-promotional items on your list and some significant dollars there, but that may be a consideration for you where we're really not, you know, violating that trust with the advisory board.
My biggest concern is that, you know, we have a relationship with the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and we respect their opinion. And that, I don't want to encourage anyone, you know, just to come, and not that I'm saying. But I do think this is a smart campaign. I love, I love the look of it. I love that it matches, you know, the Summer of Color. We have some really great things going. That's my concern.
I think a lot of the things we've talked about highlight the need for planning, and, you know, we're planning to plan, but things are moving as we're trying to get there.
Business goes on.
This recommendation came to us from Lodger's Tax. Am I not correcting it? So if I... This page?
Well, their request, they do ask us to reconsider or modify the request. So they've kind of left it up to us to decide. As Mr. Berry pointed out, we do have print here. Funds are available in the non-promotional fund.
Well, I do want to kind of ask the treasurer if she would agree with that statement. I'm winging it a little there.
Well, there are funds also available in the contingency for this year because we did do the budget adjustment. And so the contingency fund balance right now is just a little over $29,000. But I agree with the city manager. I mean, we certainly could also take it out of the non-promo because we have accrued the funds. We'll get to the financial report here a little bit later, but...
But in answer to Commissioner Chavez's question, they are asking for us to reconsider or modify, is the way I'm reading that. Is that the intent?
Could I address you on what our concerns were with the billboard initially, as far as coming out of promotional funds? First of all, one of my primary concerns is, well, plus, you know, I don't like billboards. But if we give one organization a billboard, we're setting a precedent here. She's already put one up. They've already put one up. If you want to fund it, then why can't everybody else just put up a billboard and say, hey, the museum did it. Why can't we do it, too? The other thing is, we didn't understand that the billboard was already in existence. Nobody at that meeting understood that that had already gone up. And otherwise, we would have wasted that discussion on whether we can make it more affordable, whether we can get it with Lamar, whether we can put it in a better location. So I felt that was rather disingenuous that that wasn't more clearly stated to us, that it was already in existence. You know, I'm not happy about that personally.
Well, we weren't aware that it was up at that time.
We were not aware. Okay. Well, if I hadn't driven by it and Jason hadn't seen it, we wouldn't know it now. But it was already there. It's also in kind of an awkward position. When you're driving it, it's on the left. It's kind of small. There's a big Robin Hood sign behind it that takes... There's a big Robin Hood sign behind it that takes a lot more attention than that sign. You're over here, you're supposed to know where you're going, so I'm still in the best possible position to, you know, but it's not, it's not up to me.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Chav?
I do. I would like to, what I would like to do is, and I've stressed this to some of the people, I would like to go ahead and approve the modification and award the, the money to the, to the museum, the seven thousand two hundred and thirteen. And also that, what's coming up is our training session with all of the parties that we need to have at this training session regarding Lodger's Tax money. And like you said, sometimes you get in a gray area, and I'm on record now that I'm liking that gray stuff. But I'm, but what I'm saying is that if we all get together, then along the line, we're gonna mesh together, and that everybody will know exactly what they can do. Maybe by then, we'll have the new, New Mexico Municipal League Lodger's Tax. This one is nineteen eighty-eight. You know? And here, one place that I found, if one person stays in any motel for that function, it is considered meeting the, the criteria. Well, let's not, we want all of them filled. But anyway, I would like to, to, to the rest of my commissioners, I would like to go ahead and let's modify, approve this, and then after we have this, the new training and everybody gets on the same board, we can come together as a more, a better community. And I really believe that.
So are you putting that in form of a motion?
I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we, we approve it, the, the total amount, and move forward, and so that we don't carry here any longer. This is coming pretty close for me to-
You notice I wrote down break right here?
Yeah. But I would like to make a motion as such.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the request for the funds of seven thousand two thirteen oh six, is that correct, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Mike Land, I hate to do it, but we're gonna ask for a real follow-up on this one.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes.
Not to delay the break, but I have one unrelated question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You can ponder it and let me know later, but-
Okay.
What is the, I know you guys sell a few postcards, but what is the possibility of, of the museum expanding a little bit of a gift shop?
We do, I mean, we have kind of re-presumed that.
Can we get to that there?
Oh, never mind, it'll come up on H.
We can have that discussion after the break.
Sure.
How does that sound?
Yeah. Sorry.
Mayor, I, I do have one question.
Okay.
We stated that on June twelfth, we'd meet at four-thirty, and the commission meeting is at six. It, so that allows about an hour and a half. Do y'all wanna stick with that, or would you like to have more time? I don't, it's hard to judge, and we can, we can have additional strategy sessions, but I don't know, do y'all wanna consider maybe starting at four and allowing two hours?
And a break?
And a break, I'll go for that.
Sure.
You'd like, like four o'clock on June twelfth?
Very pretty, it's four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, it's a Tuesday. I think it's a Tuesday. Tuesday afternoon. Okay, I was gonna try and go three more items before a break, but Mr. Chavis, he's kicking me in the ankle over here, so I would like to take a five-minute recess right at this moment, please. Give me back it.
Well, you know, I hear about all the branding, I hear about our marketing, and one of the things that concerns me is the Ratone Arts and Humanities Council should be, is part of that. It's part of one of those places where people need to be going to, you know, along with the Lottas Gallery and everything that we, that we propose. We represent the arts and humanities in Ratone's surrounding communities. The council's programs are designed to meet several goals and objectives, where the most important is to further develop and learn the appreciation of arts. It is recognized in the fact that arts are important to the well-being of the community and to this. This makes our mission to encourage, strengthen the cultural lives in the area providing residents where we're trained and trained in the arts, with opportunities for artistic participation, self-expression, education, enjoyment, very obtainable. And so that, you know, I see, I read that, and that's, that's what we're there for. I mean, we're, we try to, I think somebody like me that had a, that would never sit through some of the stuff we have at the show twenty years ago. And I go up there and I see, man, this is, this is opening my eyes to, you know, the diff, the, just the different types, there's the different shows in between.
Right.
And I think, you know, everybody that's been in this room's been to, been to most of our shows, or a lot of our shows, and are, some are ticket, season ticket holders. But with that being said, you know, it's, it's, we're struggling. Our, our foundations are getting tighter and tighter with their, with their funding. I mean, fortunately, we do have Brenda that is a very good person to raise, raise, to do fundraising and fundraising, and she has brought in some monies through different campaigns and things of that sort, different grants she's written. We try to, we try to do everything we can to keep our doors open. I would, you know, obviously, we're partnering with Main Street with, with the building and with all the utilities and the cost of operations, which includes, you know, part of that hospital operations is Brenda's salary. One of the other things that we do is, we're, right now, we're, we have approached the Shuler Restoration Board about, you know, maybe partnering with them on, on some of the live performances. You know, we're, you know, it just doesn't make sense for us to be competing against each other. And so, you know, that's something that Brenda's approached them about. And so nevertheless, I mean, bottom line, we still, we have a building to operate, and you know, we have utilities, we have salaries, we have just expense, and the, and our, our foundations have tightened up. They're, I mean, we, we only have received money from one foundation as far as for the, the live performances. Without, without the Lottas Gallery, I really feel that local artists wouldn't have a place to sell their wares. You know, that's just, that's, that's, that's a big part of what we do. I mean, there's something, there's a show hanging all the time in the gallery with addition of the international show, which, with the change in ownership there, we hope we'll continue to, to have it as we have in the past. We have, Brenda and I have approached the owner, you know, and let him know that we are, we are interested in partnering, and, you know, at that time, he was overwhelmed, so he really was uncommittal. But I, I really think that from, this one, I gather, he very, he wants to continue what's, what's happening around town. So, but nevertheless, without, without that, we can operate, you know. So we're asking fifty hundred dollars a month, which is eighteen thousand dollars a year coming out of non-propos, non-promotional, non-promotional Lodger's Tax funding. And like I said, this is just to pay, to keep our, pay operation, basically what it is. I mean, Brenda asks, we do our advertising out of this, we do, I mean, we do our copying out of this. I know, I know we do a lot of, I know Brenda does a lot of poster design, things like that for different organizations. I mean, we just need this stuff, we don't charge for it. It's, it's part of a, I think it's part of our, what we try to give back to the community. But I would, if, you know, if you have any questions, I know what, I know last year when I came here, you all asked for us to give you our financial report, and we did that. We do that every month. And some months are good, some months are pretty ugly, you know, just, just like any nonprofit, you know, it's, it's tough to keep the doors open. So I, if I have any questions that you might have, or anybody might have.
Terry, what kind of funding amount do you get from the other foundation?
Well, right now, we, and Brenda's probably better at this than answering some of the questions.
Did you see, you got her up there?
Yeah.
So for the next fiscal year, we have seen a big cut. We will be getting seventy-seven fifty from the Whited Foundation. And that usually pays for our entire performing our season. That's about half of it. We have not heard back from Darden. We did get twenty-five hundred dollars from the Macaroon Foundation, and we get three thousand dollars every year from the Slope Prints Foundation, and that is to bring the National Dance Institute residencies to the Ratone Intermediate School for the fifth grade class. So we're kind of a pass-through, we present that, you know, but it comes to us and goes straight out. That's next year's picture.
There are no federal dollars, are there, available anymore?
We get New Mexico Arts grants. We did just get a press release saying that New Mexico Arts will be getting another seven hundred thousand dollars from the National Endowment for the Arts. We don't know where it's gonna go. We will find out probably beginning of July what our next grant next year will be. Usually, we're around fifty-five hundred dollars. Back in the day, it used to be fifteen to ten thousand dollars.
And, you know, and, and also, like I said, back to the day, which, you know, that's honestly the way it is, we were a hundred percent funded for our live performances. And so that the ticket sales, you know, the additional ticket sales would help pay some of our overhead.
Right.
Well, you know, I mean, right now, we're gonna be trying to make up shows. And on top of that, we actually went in and we cut our budget by, how much, probably, probably about seven billion dollars from what we did last year, by trying to, trying, you know, bringing the same type of entertainment, but not being, bringing as expensive as entertainment. We try to work with, we try to work with allies, which is actually, it's the best thing for us because we don't have to worry about providing our own sound, we don't have to provide everything, you know, it's a kind of a, it's a turnkey type operation. So, you know, we try to be smart that way because when we do stuff, we, we do things like a cover, like a cover van or a tribute van, well, then we have to provide sound from, and, I mean, it's a nightmare, you know, pulling everything out of the closets to, to try to do that. And it's, it's, it's a lot more work, and we, you know, we do, and it's also done, we make a little more money on those things, but we don't have, we don't have a lot of staff. I mean, we just, there's probably about four of us that really work really hard like any other organization, so. But, anything else that-
I just, being new, I don't know, have we funded in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
And what amount, or just the twenty-one million? Fourteen hundred? Fourteen thousand total?
Fourteen thousand total.
Yeah. And I think, I think the reason, and when we did that, it was kind of, we came prior, or we came kind of in the middle of the year, and I think there was a concern about the funds that were available at that time. And we, you know, we were instructed to come back later and, and, you know, ask for more, you know, later on, if, if the money comes, come up a little bit. Well, you know, we were able to squeak by, you know, so, you know, if we can get by, we get by, but it just, I mean, it's, we did squeak by last year, it was very, so. Anything else?
I think the motion is approved, that's why nineteen funding request from Ratone Arts and Humanities Council. Is there any further discussion?
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for the full amount, eighteen thousand dollars for the Ratone Arts and Humanities Council. Is there any further discussion? I got one question, Mike Land. What was the number we had available? Did you say forty-five thousand? What was that from something else?
Well, we are talking about next fiscal year's budget. So in, this is coming out of the non-promotional. So in our draft budget, we didn't budget anything for Arts and Humanities or the museum. So they did get awarded fourteen thousand four hundred last year. So if you're approving the full eighteen, we would just plug that into the Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional, which is our Fund 205. I was gonna make a point earlier, as of the, the city manager was talking that we were accruing funds in the Lodger's Tax Non-Promo. Give me just a second. So in our financial report, apologize, it's paper tonight. Our ending cash balance in the Lodger's Tax Non-Promo as of April thirtieth is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so.
So I can ask for a billboard then, too?
Don't, don't press your laptop.
No, I'm just, you know, I can, I can.
Is there any other, any other discussion?
Just up what you're asking for, right now.
Any other discussion? Okay. And all in favor, vote with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, my pleasure, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Adam H., deliberate and act on fiscal year nineteen funding request from Ratone Museum. Kathy, you're back up.
Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity, and I know you've listened to me long enough, so to review the packet that was presented to you in regards to our request, as in prior, last, as in the prior year, we are asking for the same amount of funding that was funded to us last year, which is the amount of thirty thousand dollars. We have provided you with financial statements, profit and loss, balance sheet, from the ending of twenty seventeen, which was the full end of our last fiscal year. Also, a list of programs, our walking tours, guide, and, let's see, I believe visitors count are before you there. And as you can see, visitation did go up last year, not as much as it has been up in the past. But again, I think, you know, leading people and driving people into the center of the community, the tourist information center having local control, I think makes a difference there. And the Ratone Museum works very well with other agencies and organizations and housing event places within the community. I mean, people come to us from the Shuler, we send people to the Shuler, we send people to the art gallery to, you know, experience downtown historic district through the walking tours, which takes them around all of that area, as well as, you know, saying, there are plenty of things for you to do within the community, NRA, Sugar Reed, you know, again, traveling to Capulum and then coming back. So encouraging travelers to stay longer. And we have seen more people pulling into the community that have said, we used to just drive by all the time, and we just decided to come in and go downtown. So again, I think, you know, creating that awareness that we exist is key and crucial. So since I've talked enough, I'll just, and I, to your, to your question about the sales, you know, having a bigger gift shop.
Right.
That is doable. I mean, we've kind of relayed it out, I don't know if you've been in there lately, but we've reconfigured how that is, so it gives the visibility better, again, having volunteers. I mean, we have one paid staff person.
Right.
Having volunteers that are available to be able to man a gift shop when Roger is giving a tour, I mean, it, that, you know, presents a problem. And, and as Terry said, you know, having donations and admissions and, you know, people helping fund the museum without, you know, additional volunteers that can give them their time, it's difficult to do that. You know, our sales members, as you can see through the year, are not great, but they're, you know, again, I think with the reconfiguration, they may increase, because right after we did that, people are going, oh, I want one of those, and I want one of those. So I think, again, presentation and, and how they're configured is gonna help. With our programming this year, a lot of the presenters are doing book signings and, you know, offering books. So, you know, Colfax County Wars, we do not have that book in our current area for sale, so that will be available. We have a new local artist, or authors, Pat Veltre or Patricia Veltre and Patricia Walsh, they will be doing a presentation actually on the thirty-first, so that is next Thursday at the museum with their new book, Sugar Reed Coal Camps. So that will be the premiere starting of their book tours and their book signing presentation. So they, you know, again, we will have some of those available for sale in, in our area. We try to promote, you know, local, local history, and I think the event list, as you can see, is kind of enticing and colorful. I mean, it's not all about just coal mining and whatnot. We have a lot of interesting things that have taken place in the past, and probably many to come in the future that we can continue to do programming on, so. I stand for any questions.
Hey, Kathy, you know, I'm, I'm the one that plays the devil's advocate.
Hey, everybody's gotta have one.
And just like, like Commissioner Mayor Pro Tim Schuster was saying.
Uh-huh.
I think we start, we need to start looking for ways to become self-sufficient. One question I've got, you're showing that you had twenty-four hundred visitors- One question I've got, you're showing that you had 2,400 visitors, but your admission fees were only twenty-five hundred and seventy-six dollars. What are we, are we not, are we charging them a buck?
No, no, the fees as far as charging for those fees, but there are events that are free. And there are other activities that are, you know, for other organizations. So, those are included in that. Some people, if they are members, are free of charge. Also, anyone under the age of 18 is not charged, which are included in numbers. When, you know, someone signs them, there's a party of four, two of them could be younger, you know, students or children. And the scouts, I would have said Boy Scouts, but scouts are entered free. So, that could, I mean, that's the differential there. But if you are a member, which you do have some in the back of your packets, if you haven't joined, you enter free.
That's an annual.
It is an annual.
So, I think it's time for us to re-up. Yeah, that was kind of what I thought, is that you're counting each.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what, okay.
I might think of it. The life of Roger, I mean, the museum is kept throughout, just date, past history and everything. I think it's very light. You're doing a job very special. Roger in charge.
He's an excellent asset and does it for next to nothing. So, we truly appreciate everything he does for the, to tell the stories and tell the history itself. And as a side note, and I didn't mention it earlier, but New Mexico Magazine, when they came forward, they just sent a photographer this last week. What was it, Thursday or Monday? Or Friday, actually. He was there from 10:30 to 4 o'clock taking photographs of the museum, so, for that feature article. So, we have, you know, our coordination with entities throughout the state and all around is really immense, and it does bring a lot of awareness. They're looking for stuff that we have. I mean, talking social media, I bet, I spend two hours a day on email answering, do you know if my great-great-grandfather was, lived in this house, this place? And it's like, you know, you're getting constant inquiries as to people wanting to know more about the history of the area and/or more about ancestors. So, it's an interesting and very viable necessity for this community. And as I think, you know, Terry had indicated, you know, it is downtown. It is there full-time. We are not an event, we are it. But we have something for someone.
And don't give me, I think the museum's a great asset.
No, 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 and I'm not, and I'm not saying that as critical. I'm just, you know, pointing out that that's.
Right, right.
Kathy, do you track the email, like numbers on those of how many people are contacting you for that kind of information? Because that'd be really interesting to find out about. Ancestry genealogy is so hot.
Oh, I know it, it is.
Yeah.
As far as specific to just that, I could probably go back and do that. I don't split them out and filter them, but maybe that is.
But you do track all the.
Yeah, yeah, we do. And then we respond, you know, and if we do have information that they're looking for that we can provide, Roger makes copies and/or reaches out to them and provides that information. We just had someone just this last week that was in passing through wanting more information about Goodnight. And, you know, was a relative, a distant relative to someone that was on that trail. Having information, we provided that. They came in, they paid their entry fee and, you know, got that information, looked around, and walking out the door, left a hundred dollars in the donation box, you know. And people appreciate having the opportunity to come in and research that type of stuff. I mean, our photograph files are extensive. They're huge. I mean, go on and on forever. People will come in and Roger will set them down and say, here's the file on whoever. And you just start looking through it, and people will find, oh, there's a picture of my great-great-grandmother or whatever, I mean, whatever the case may be. But it is used a lot for research, which I think a lot of people don't realize.
Is that highlighted? I haven't been to the website in a while. It does look nice. But is that highlighted on the website anywhere, the ability for people to research, to kind of pull people?
We do have it in one of the other things. I don't know if it's maybe as highlighted as much as it could be. And again, I mean, we need to refresh that some, but it's utilized on.
There are no more questions. I'll make a motion to approve FY '19 funding request.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the funding of thirty thousand dollars for the Ratone Museum. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you all very much. We truly support, appreciate the support that you offer to the museum. And if you don't mind, well, I'll probably save for a minute, just because she said the list. After that.
Yeah, Adam, aye. Here's a presentation by the Ratone Chamber, the annual report. And that ties it in, I guess, to the MOU as well. We can, we'll hear the presentation first.
Yes. And I apologize, the presentation isn't a written presentation. I've had my head down for the last six weeks working on the visitor guide. One thing I do want to talk about is the visitor guide. Comes out on Friday. The electronic version will be pushed out probably on Thursday, because Melissa and I will be going to Denver to pick it up on Friday. And you won't be seeing it, some of you have already seen a little bit of a preview, but you will actually have it in hand on Friday. I am excited. It's 56 pages this year instead of 48. We expanded the page count. We upped the quality of the content. We took into account, we really wanted to go more toward a travel magazine, much more visual, great pictures. We included a Brews and Barbecue Road Trip with the specific itinerary like travel magazines have. You'll also note, when you get it and you start reading the content, that a lot of, even though the branding really wasn't hard-formed, when we were putting it together, Jared sent over some of the verbiage. So, you'll recognize some of the verbiage from the mission statement, even though that particular branding isn't there yet. But some of that verbiage is, especially in the relocation section. We really wanted to highlight the relocation. One of the things that we did, we took the information that we've gathered from working the visitor center, which is seven days a week, we're open every day. And staffing that has been absolutely our biggest challenge, but it's also been the most rewarding. I think we've seen a lot of benefit for the community. Our volunteers have donated thousands of man-hours. We're seeing an increase in traffic coming through there. People know we're there. We get a lot of repeat visitors. So, that's all good. And this year, we're printing 25,000 visitor guides. I don't think we'll have any problem distributing those. In fact, I anticipate we will run out. We're including Arizona, Kansas, Colorado, Texas, Oklahoma, as well as New Mexico. So, we will have a much broader reach. One of the things we're also doing with the electronic version is we are going to be able to have our own analytics on the back to see who's reading it and how long, not only how long are they lingering to read the magazine itself, but how long they're lingering on each page. So, we'll know which sections they're reading, if they're interested in relocation, if they're interested in our wildlife article, if they're looking at the parks section. So, we will be able to really drill down to what people are interested in. And one of the things we did with this magazine, and you'll notice when you get it, there are a lot of little factoids. You know how like Southwest Airlines does all these little factoids? We did that, and we drew those facts from questions we're asked constantly. How deep is Lake Dorothy? How deep is Lake Malloya? What kind of fish are there here? What kind, you know, it's all those little things that we get asked a thousand times that we tried to put into the magazine. We also tried to anticipate, last year, we ran into the situation where the state cut funding for the parks, federal cut funding for Capulum, and they were not able to provide us the amount of printed matter that we needed. So, we ended up spending a lot of money doing color copies of their brochures. This year, we included that information in our guide. So, we're going to recognize some savings right there from just including it in the guide instead of spending extra money to copy their stuff. We anticipate, their funding's probably not going to go up, and if it does, it won't be anytime soon. So, we, but we want our visitors to be able to have that information. So, we included it. We are anticipating, as soon as this comes out, our board will sit down and evaluate what happened this year financially with the guide, how we feel like it went, how we feel like the content's going to design next year. I can tell you already, next year will be bigger. We want it to be much more regional next year, to include more of the region. We also will have a lot more people advertising. I think a lot of people wanted to see that we could pull it off this year. And now that, obviously, they'll see the result of that, I think that would be very positive for us. We did do numbers, true numbers-wise, a little bit better than we did last year. However, if we had had to actually pay someone to put it together, instead of me doing it for free, that thirty thousand dollars, we wouldn't have made any money. So, we recognize the savings based on our own efforts, and we'll be continuing that. We're training Melissa, and our new staff member is going to be trained to work those programs. We're also anticipating moving over Week in Ratone to the same situation where we can tell who's opening it, who's viewing it, what they're seeing, and you'll see some changes there. I'm sure you've already seen our logo being pushed out, our new logo, and we've gotten really positive response from that. And so, we anticipate all of that being positive. We have already been training many more volunteers for our summer season. Over the winter, we were running about 10% ahead of where we were last year, eight to 10%. The numbers have really picked up in May, and we anticipate that continuing. Not having a winter, everybody's already traveling. And so, we anticipate, it depends on what they do with the National Forest, Stage Two restrictions go into effect, I think, tomorrow. So, that will have a little bit of effect, but hopefully not much, especially if we get more rent. So, all of that has been very, very good. It has been a very hard year as far as the amount of work the board has put in. Our volunteers have been great. If it weren't for them, we absolutely couldn't do it. And there are some of them who have shown up every week since the day we started, and we couldn't do it without them. But we also have many more new people who are coming in, even people new to the community, who are wanting to volunteer because they've heard really good things about it. So, we feel like that positive will is going to help us in every area. Our anticipation for the Tourism Coordinator. We discussed, do we ask for more, do we ask for less? We've got a three-year MOU that's renewable every year. But the feedback we've received was really, and we absolutely agree with this, by the way, we're just now reaching stability. So, we can, but we want to ensure that we can carry through these three years, be stable. Because, you know, when you're working with volunteers, the idea of stability is a moving target. It's gone very, very well. They've been wonderful. But we want to go through another summer. We want to see how it's going. We want to see how the Tourism Coordinator position functions. One of the things the board has decided to do, because we had some discussions on what we could do this year, do we want to do events, and by the way, that's a no. Or do we want to, what do we want to do with the income that we do produce? And we decided to put it back into people. So, we are hiring a part-time administrative person to help with some of the online presence for the chamber, to help with a lot of the administrative, the invoicing, some of that stuff that none of us have time to do. And so, we are putting that money back into people because we feel like that has hindered us from reaching all of our goals. We have a number of goals, but we only have so much time and so many people. And with most of us being volunteers, it hinders us moving ahead as quickly as we would like. So, we're going to start investing that money back into people so we can address some of the other goals we would like to see, as well as enhancing what we're already doing.
I think it's important to clarify that the money you're reinvesting is not Rogers Tax, Tourism Coordinator dollars. It is Chamber.
It is absolutely Chamber dollars. The Chamber gets no remuneration for doing the visitor center. All of that is donated time on everyone's part. We get no money from Rogers Tax for that. The Tourism Coordinator salary is now up to, I just wrote it down, 27,144. It pays for the lease on our copy machine, which we really need to investigate a new copy machine, but it pays for that lease. And so, we're left with about twelve or thirteen hundred dollars after that. That's what we use, because we spent a whole lot of money on copies this year. We did come and ask Rogers Tax for extra money to cover some of those copies. But that's what we use for coffee and those sorts of things. But it will be used up this year as that Tourism Coordinator salary increases. So, the Chamber gets nothing, absolutely nothing. But yet, we talk one-on-one with more than 20,000 people. There is no other event, there is nothing else that happens in Ratone that has that kind of reach, where you talk to people one-on-one. It's great to have clicks on a website. It's great to have views on a billboard. But when you talk to people one-on-one and you can direct them where to eat, where to stay, what they need to see, that makes a huge difference. It really, really does. And that's one of the reasons we have become so committed to that visitor center, is because we're seeing the result of that. People are coming back. They're seeing the same volunteers, the same faces. They know them by name, you know. And that's great. That's really great. And so, we really want to keep that up and let people know they can expect absolutely great hospitality, clean bathrooms, a wonderful facility, so they'll stop here every time they come and stay a few days.
Okay, well, a couple of comments. One, I've seen the preview. It's going to be worth seeing, guys. They've done a really good job, really good job. I have, since my wife is a volunteer down there, I've heard good comments from that side of it, that everyone is getting information they need. One of the things, and I think Mayor Pro Tim Schuster touched on with the museum, is we'd like you to investigate possibly some kind of gift shop. Because when we travel, we stop at the information centers, and there's always the hat, the coffee mug or the t-shirt.
Yes.
And I've got every one of them, you know.
Well, and we've already started discussions on that. I think like every nonprofit, we're hindered by staff.
Sure.
It's hard to do that with volunteers. They don't want to touch money.
I understand that.
Don't blame them. But I've had to have several discussions with Jeff Peterson on monetizing that space, on different ways we can do it, and including some of those individuals who are making food products out of Ratone, including specific products to Ratone, and doing that in a way that doesn't compete with our other souvenir shops, but enhances what's being done. So, we're kind of targeting, coming up with some plan by fall. We can't really do anything during the summer because we're so busy. But this fall, Jeff and I have already started those discussions, but we would like to really, truly investigate going that direction and hopefully come up with a way where we can add staff members. Because that's what it's going to take, is staff.
Absolutely.
You know, for that situation.
And I just want to, I've missed the last few meetings. I've had conflicts. But I want to commend you guys for the job you've done. From when we, Lyndi and I got involved almost, a little over two years ago now, we were literally thinking of shutting the doors. And you guys have really done an outstanding job. So, I commend you and your staff.
Well, it's been a big team effort. I think there are a lot of people who really want to see the Chamber move forward positively, but yet do things in a very quality way. You can't just move forward. You have to move forward well.
Right.
And so, that's what we're really trying to do, is produce quality, produce value, and really bring people into all the businesses in Ratone. So, and we're looking at several other advertising, actually, it's funny, because we called on the billboard Kathy's kidding. And didn't, like, the same day she presented it to Rogers Tax, so we told them no. But, because it's a great spot, you know, and for Chamber billboard or whatever. And you'll also notice the museum ad that she's doing is also in the visitor guide.
I saw that.
And it's in our history ad, as is an excerpt, Pat Dennis' excerpt from their Coal Camp Kitchen book, and we have photographs, and so that's really great. So, it'll work together really well.
Any questions or comments for Dee?
I think it's good. And we have an election coming up in November. We could possibly get some funding back from the state with.
Possible.
It's possible, you know, because they. It's possible, you know, because they, they were cruel about shutting it down the way they did.
Well, you know, I'll be honest with you. When you take their money, you put up with them. And if we can do it without cost and with full and total control over what people who come into that center see and are told, that would be my preference. Get them to pay for something else. But, because if they take that back over and they start directing everyone to Santa Fe again, it completely wipes out everything we've built.
Absolutely.
And I'm very concerned about that because that's exactly, now that they can see, and I do believe they regret letting it go, but I, I really think it's to the city's benefit not to give it back.
I'd have to agree. You guys have done a great job of turning it into a regional, more localized Visitor Center.
Yeah, I'm working with regional entities, and you'll see, even within this guide, the Colfax County Fair Schedule and some of those things, we really want to be much more regional. Our brews and barbecue tour takes, goes all the way down to Red River. We've developed a very good relationship with them. And so, we're really developing or working toward developing good relationships with other Chambers, other entities. And here again, it's all about making everybody's dollars go further and getting that promotion.
Right.
For those of us that aren't involved with the Chamber, you know, I, I think it's really wonderful that we're reorganizing our commission report so that some of that can come back so we can find out more about what's really going on with the tourism. Because I feel like there may be just a little communication gap of, not that there aren't fabulous things going on, but just kind of finding out about it. And that's maybe my own fault, going on, seeking that out, but I look forward to that.
And that is one criticism I've heard is that Melissa's reports to Lodger's Tax are not always.
Tour-related.
They don't feel there, there's enough tourism-related information. And so, maybe that might be something.
Well, that's good, and that's, that's good feedback. I will say during the winter, she does less tourism. During the summer, it's all tourism.
Exactly.
But, but that's, that's noted, and I'll definitely pass that along and ensure that that's improved.
Right.
And I really wish, I would really like you all to hear those reports because those meetings are not recorded. You know, there is kind of a communication gap, and so, maybe that's something we can include at least quarterly, that you all, if you all are interested in that, that we have her come and really talk, and you can ask questions. Because these are recorded, and a lot of people do go back and listen to them, and they need to know that information as well.
That would be great.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
So, item J then would be deliberate an act on MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Chamber for Tourism Coordinator. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, we had drafted or redrafted a memorandum of understanding in 2017 between the City of Raton and the Raton Chamber of Commerce. So, the provisions of that memorandum of understanding allowed for annual renewal of that agreement for three years, as Dee had said. So, you have that 2017 MOU in your packet. You also have an amendment to that that would extend that agreement for this upcoming year for your consideration.
Can I ask a question? I just noticed in there that, and I, I don't know if you guys were able to track down the Appendix A of the Tourism Coordinator's job description, just because I had never seen it before.
Yeah, the, the job description really is, is something that the Chamber would draft and provide to the, you know, and so, I, we, we don't have that. It does indicate there's an attachment to this agreement. The, the duties are really described in here that, that we're concerned about, and the funding of the Tourism Coordinator is detailed in the agreement. So, the, the scope of work that goes along with that funding is described in here. The, the actual duties of the, of the Coordinator, I think, are drafted by the Chamber. And so, we need to get that attachment. We did not have it.
Right.
And, and we'll include it in here because that's what the, the agreement says. But we don't have it tonight.
Actually, the position started as an OJT, so there's a pretty extensive description of, of what was required for Tourism Coordinator workforce. I can certainly get that to you all. And obviously, her duties changed with season. And there is a certain percentage of her time that the Chamber is awarded for managing that position. And so, we do get part of her time. That's always a point of contention, how much is. But she goes over and, over and beyond for what she does. I will also mention, just so you all are aware, I mentioned it to Lodger's Tax. One of the things that we'll be careful about is overtime, especially during the summer months. We have adjusted her schedule where she comes in late on Mondays now, so she's available on Saturdays to attend these events as Tourism Coordinator and take photographs, be seen, and do those things. We kind of ran into that problem last year that we ran out of hours, and she wasn't at the event. So, we've adjusted that so this year, she'll be much more visible at those events.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion?
I'll move to approve the continuation of the MOU between the City of Raton and the Chamber Tourism, Chamber for the Tourism Coordinator for the 2008, well, it'd be 2019 fiscal year.
We have a motion and a second to extend the MOU between the City of Raton, Raton Chamber for Tourism Coordinator. Any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item K, deliberate an act on dispatch agreement between, you bet, City of Raton and Town of Springer. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, the City of Raton Dispatch Center located here in City Hall really provides regional dispatch for all of the public agencies in the area. And we, throughout the year, we bring these agreements to you for renewal on an annual basis. So, this would be a, a one-year agreement with Town Springer for those dispatch services. You see the amount, $32,004 for those services. And not much has changed in the scope of work or the amount from previous years. So, you have a recommendation for approval of this dispatch agreement as submitted.
So, moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was quick, Mr. Chavis. You're getting quick.
Impressive.
Item M, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-28, April Financial Report, fiscal year 18. Mike Land.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is our April report.
What we missed? I missed another one?
Oh, we did, yes.
I checked it off first. My, my apologies. Number L. I skipped right over it. Deliberate an act on amendment to Solid Waste Transfer Station, NMFA loan number 2890-PP and Notice of Defeasance. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, in 2013, the City of Raton had financed improvements to the solid waste system through New Mexico Finance Authority, and that was five years ago now. So, the terms of that loan are really that the funds will be expended within five years. And, and you recognize that Finance Authority, it's, it's a typical way of financing infrastructure projects for public agencies, specifically municipalities in New Mexico, and they, they sell bonds there. So, somewhere in the world, there is a bondholder with this issue. However, we, the City of Raton has retasked those funds over the years from what they originally were anticipated to, to some different tasks. And one of those tasks includes construction of the transfer station. And we've talked about the transfer station numerous times here at the commission meetings. However, that, the remaining principal amount would go to construction of the transfer station, and that has not been accomplished. So, the outstanding principal amount is $539,400, as I read that here. We have an issue with that being that we are five years into that issue at the end of May. So, we are following the direction of New Mexico Finance Authority, their board in defeesing that remaining balance. That would essentially close out that loan, and I believe that we would see a little refund of the, the security there that goes along with this loan. So, we would defees that, close the loan out, just have money coming back, not owe anything for the money that we've expended so far on the loan. Because we have made payments on the loan over the five-year period. And then, we would, we would be looking at refinancing this amount for the construction of the transfer station. That would take place in a separate action to come to the commission.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Berry?
I make a motion to approve amendment to Solid Waste Transfer Station, NMFA loan number 2890-PP and Notice of Defeasance.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the Solid Waste Transfer Station, NMFA loan number 2890-PP and Notice of Defeasance. Is there any other further discussion? Mike Land, can we do a roll call on that one, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes, thank you. Okay, now, we can deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-28, April Financial Report. Mike Land.
Okay. Pass my bill. So, as I said before, you have in your packet the financial report through April 30th. You will see that our available cash balance in the general fund less our 1/12 reserve is $1,767,582. Our grocery receipts check for the month of May. We have the history report in your packet also was just slightly, let's see, $387,792. And that puts us 4.25% above our year-to-date budget projections. So, we'll have one more grocery receipts tax check for the month of June to close out this fiscal year. So, I feel pretty confident, as we've talked in the past, that any excess GRT above our projections would cover the deficit, of course, of the small cities assistance and any other general fund line items that we may have. So, the end of the year is fast approaching, and the city will be working with our department heads to close out any outstanding purchase orders and also submit end-of-year grant reimbursements and perform closeout of those grants as well. So, as in years past, if we have any grant reimbursements that are still outstanding as of June 30th, as our end-of-the-year budget adjustment, we'll have to do some temporary transfers, to transfer funds from the general fund to those grant funds. And then, we'll budget, in our final budget, a transfer going back into the general fund once those funds are received from that grant agency. So, hopefully, we can get them done soon enough and get most of them in before the end of the fiscal year. But some of our programs, like juvenile justice program, if we have services and activities that run up through the end of June, they usually give us until about July 6th to get in that final reimbursement. So, we will close those out. Let's see, we also received approval from the state auditor this week to proceed with our audit services, and that was based on the recommendation that we approved a couple meetings ago. So, our auditors are already reaching out to us to begin early test work. And so, we'll be scheduling some dates here in the next couple of weeks to perform some early test work, and then we'll schedule some dates in the fall for them to come for a full week. Other than that, we're finishing up our interim budget, and hopefully, we'll be submitting that to DFA no later than June 1st. Not hopefully, we will. So, but that date is fast approaching as well. Is there any questions on any of the financials?
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-28, April Financial Report, fiscal year 18. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-29, Budget Adjustment Number 14.
Mayor and Commission, you have our resolution to propose budget adjustments. We are proposing quite a few line item adjustments. Most of these are just adjustments that'll get us through the end of the fiscal year. I did kind of a complete review of our financials after we posted payments last Friday. So, I wanted to get as many budget adjustments in as I could before the end of the fiscal year. And then, hopefully, we'll just have one more final budget adjustment for the end of the year. So, in the general fund, these are just moving monies around in the various funds. And then, in the fire fund, I'm requesting an adjustment to adjust our fire allotment to reflect the actual distribution that was received this year. So, we did receive that final distribution from the state fire marshal last month. And so, our total distribution for the year, we did have $19,908 more than we had budgeted. So, we're just requesting to reallocate those revenues to the various expense line items for the fire department. And then, let's see, in the library, we are requesting, they did receive the executed grant agreements for the GO bond agreement just a couple of months ago. And so, we'd like to insert that into this year's fiscal year budget. What we'll do is at the end of the year, whatever monies Thayla Wright, our librarian, has not spent, we'll rebudget that in our final budget. So, she does have a few expenditures that she'd like to make between now and the end of the fiscal year, but we'll rebudget the balance of that grant once that's determined. Other than that, I did do a budget adjustment, a couple adjustments ago when we were making some temporary transfers on this NMD grant, which we're using for the transfer station building that we just purchased. However, I did not adjust these other transfer in-and-out line items so that we could reimburse the money back to that solid waste fund. So, we have received the reimbursement from the environment department, and I'll be in the process of transferring those monies back to the solid waste fund. So, I wanted to take care of that. And then, trust and agency, we have a holding account for our Raton Water Works grocery receipts, and that was something new this year that DFA requested so that we could track the collection of the grocery receipts, but then also the check that we issue to Raton Water Works every month. And so, since our GRT's exceeding our projected figures we have in the budget, I'm just asking to increase the revenue and expense on that fund as well. Is there any questions?
No questions, I'll approve Resolution 2018-29, Budget Adjustment Number 14.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-29, Budget Adjustment Number 14, fiscal year 18. Any further discussions? Nope. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item O, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-30, RPS disposal of property. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this item has been sent forward from the RPS board, and it has to do with closing the books on the Vortzilla generating set. That was constructed in 2002, and it suffered catastrophic engine damage in 2012. It has been fully removed, replaced, and as you remember, the Genbacher unit now is, is operational in that place. So, this action would take the Vortzilla off of the books.
All righty. Now, we discussed this last night. RPS had a similar resolution that was passed and adopted by the board.
Yeah, so I do have a signed copy of that that Sandy Chavis gave us today. And so, we just. And so we just modeled our resolution, uh, based on the one that RPS did. And then we'll submit it to DFA to get the proper approval.
Make the motion to approve resolution 2018 dash 30, RPS disposal of property.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 2018 dash 30, disposal of RPS property. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Item P, discussion on funding for economic development. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, uh, I think that in our, uh, discussions of the upcoming fiscal year 19 budget, uh, we had talked about funding for economic development. And I, I, you know, want to open this up to the commission for discussion or, uh, possibly people that are present at the meeting, uh, although the room is cleared out considerably over the last couple of hours. But, uh, uh, I think there's a general feeling that, um, this is time to be more active in economic development. So, um, I think currently our model is we, we, uh, use a, a variety of people here on city staff for economic development as, uh, um, things come up. Uh, certainly we have, uh, people that volunteer their time for economic development in the community. We have partners, uh, for that. Um, I, I would say that typically, uh, New Mexico communities will have an increment of grocery seats tax that is dedicated towards economic development, more formal economic development program. Um, and I guess much like, uh, tourism and, and lodgers tax funding, uh, the, the, the right mix of, of what you do with those funds, that resource, uh, probably is, is different for each community and, uh, Raton would have to find its correct mix. Um, I, I will give you a, a heads up that, uh, I would plan on bringing a recommendation to the commission for the next election that we consider a, uh, a, a ballot issue to add an economic development, um, increment of GRT to the ballot. And of course, we'll have some due diligence to do on that. And one thing, Mayor and Commission, is we're not sure right now when the next election is. We'll have to make some decisions on that. So we have a couple of, of things to take care of, but I would like to discuss with you, uh, possibly funding economic development in the future with an increment of GRT. Uh, but that will be in the future. Uh, so I think we want to have a discussion of funding for economic development tonight. And we do have, uh, one place that we would recommend to the commission that we would go, that's the old revolving loan fund. And I'm going to call on Michael Ann to try to give us a little more details on the revolving loan fund, if you don't mind.
Well, I, I didn't dig out any of the historical records for tonight's discussion, but, uh, we do have a file and years ago and it also, it predates myself, uh, when I started in 2003. But the city did, um, have a source of funding through the New Mex- New Mexico Economic Development and it was through this revolving loan fund. And so they funded several different, um, I guess, business proposals for Raton. Um, a couple of them that were not successful and one that did end up in some litigation. Uh, but once all of that was settled out, um, all of the funds that were due back to New Mexico Economic Development were paid back to them. And so in our file, it does show that there is no outstanding monies to be paid back to New Mexico Economic Development. Uh, but somewhere along the lines with the repayment from some of these companies and stuff, we ended up with a balance of $60,335 in this fund. And it has just sat there dormant, I would say, for at least since probably 2002. And so, um, in discussions with our auditors, uh, they do feel that, you know, it is the city's money. Um, it is not owed back to the state and that the city could certainly make some decisions on how to utilize those funds, um, possibly transfer the monies to the general fund or if you so choose to use it as, to fund some potential economic development, that would be an option as well.
And I think the, uh, the original intent was aimed at economic development, so I think that's appropriate. Uh, we bring it to the commission tonight for discussion, um, see if there's interest of, with the commission on, uh, considering that designation. And then the mechanism for, um, utilization of those funds is something that we'll have to determine as well. But, uh, I'll answer any questions that you might have or throw it back to you, Mayor.
You know, you and I have had extensive conversations along this line. I think it's somewhere where we can begin. We've got a, a nest egg now for some economic development and then we can start to utilize that in, in places. Uh, hearing what's going on in the town, very impressed with what's going down at, at Jeff's Center. I think that's someplace we need to, to really utilize the talent there and, uh, and, uh, look to them for some direction and some help and, and stuff in that. We've got Paul there with, with, uh, Grow Raton. We appreciate everything he's done. So we've got avenues that we can go down. I think it's a, a good thing to have this and designate it for the, the economic development and, and work from there. Once it's in the budget, we, we can then go forward and, and utilize a plan for it, correct?
Absolutely.
But we have to come up with a, we have to come up with a plan or can we transfer the funds into the, to the, uh, economic development, uh, sector of our budget and...
Mayor, Commissioner Chavis, I, I don't know that a transfer of funds, uh, really is, is required at this time. I think though that, uh, an expression of the commission and, and probably in our consideration of the interim budget, that you concur with, uh, the designation of those funds for an economic development purpose. And then as we say, we really need to do some planning and develop our mechanism there. And it's probably a little premature to really, uh, you know, try to get into details. I think we need some input from our community partners. Uh, certainly you've heard a request from Grow Raton as far as, uh, a funding request. Um, I, I think we need to take stock of where we're going at that point and, and that's a pretty new conversation.
Yeah, and I think it's something that kind of ties into our, our meeting we're going to have with everybody on the 12th. You know, it's, we're not talking lodger's tax funds here, but at the same time, we get ideas from the other folks where we can go and what kind of growth we can look at trying to accomplish.
I think it's a good move.
Yeah, I agree.
I would entertain a motion to allocate that for economic development if that is the wish of the...
I think this is just a discussion item.
Oh, sorry.
I think that under the...
Boy, we're, we're not, you know, it's past, way past my bedtime now, so...
But I think under the next item, uh, we, we could, we probably have some things, uh, several things to talk about in the budget and that, that's probably appropriate.
Okay. So we've had the discussion. Is there any further discussion on that?
I just want to say thank you because I know that was a priority for some of us and that you went out and tried to find some money for that, so appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. Yeah, when he told me about it a couple of days ago, I was like, alright. Yeah. It's like we won the lottery. Okay. Item Q, deliberate an act on resolution 2018 31, adoption of the fiscal year 19 interim budget for the city of Raton, Raton Water Works and Raton Public Service. Mr. Berry?
So Mayor and Commission, uh, you have the work from the, both utility boards, Raton Public Service and Raton Water Works included, uh, in your information there. They have, their boards have considered their budget and forwarded that to you for your consideration. Uh, I don't have a lot of comment on, on those budgets. However, uh, the, uh, economic development funding that we just talked about may be something that we consider and, um, the, I think the other thing is you gave us some direction on, uh, salary increases and you see an analysis here, uh, we can do, uh, about anything that the commission, uh, would like to consider here. Our preliminary budget, uh, was based on a 1% increase of, of wages or salaries for non-represented employees across the board, uh, with the city. Based on the discussion, we also modeled a 1.5% and a 2% increase. As you can see that for every half percent, uh, dealing with the general fund employees, we're talking about a, approximately a $6,000 increase. Uh, so, um, we do have some other sources of funding that, that can come in in different places, but in a, in a nutshell, that's what we're looking at for, uh, those increases. I think those are probably the two items we wanted to discuss tonight. Uh, we are looking at a schedule for submittal of this interim budget. I think we're at the point here where, uh, we'd like to consider that with the commission and, uh, do any of these last-minute incorporations that we have.
So also attached to that is just kind of a itemized spreadsheet that I started of just the various changes and things that I'll be requesting, uh, your consideration on. Um, so I've kind of tried to itemize it by page number because with the action this evening, if we're approving it as amended with the items that we've approved on tonight's agenda, plus these that I'm also proposing, I'm going to have to go back into this document and be very meticulous in correcting all of those so that I can, uh, print you out the final interim as it was approved with these changes. So I, I want to make sure that we track every single change that I need to make.
So one thing you see on the sheet here is, um, uh, we have, uh, we are heading towards a, a modification on how we provide the clothing benefit to employees. You see some of that reflected in here. Um, we are learning that, uh, we were awarded, well, I think, uh, Jason Phillips had advised you that we, we're going to receive a, a rate grant from the New Mexico Environment Department for tire abatement, amount of $25,000. See that budgeted? Um, that's going to go pretty far to removing all of our scrap tires. Uh, you, you remember, we were left with some large tires out there, very expensive to handle. So those are the things that I see, uh, in brief here.
These will have to be acted on now, we, for the budget for June 1st, right? That we have to submit it by June 1st on all this?
Right. Yes.
A lot of these we've, we fast forward, for lack of a better word. We've, we've suggested these changes and that's what she's there. Like tonight, we added 18 for the, the non-promotional and 30 for the museum, you know, for the non-promotional.
And then 30 for the tourism.
30 for the tourism, the branding effort we did and the co-op grant.
So the co-op grant is 9,0287. And then, now on the branding effort, I guess, uh, that actually is going to be, I guess, maybe Commissioner Chatterley can clarify that. I took it that we were approving it to come out of this fiscal year.
For the 1,000?
For the, just initial $1,000 to move forward with the style guide and the logo. So is that monies that could be spent before June 30?
I think our, how long does, I've never done a request for proposals, so I wasn't sure how long that process would take.
Well, it's going to be pushing ahead.
Is it more than a month?
Well, it's a, it's a reimbursement. Uh, we generally reimburse the entity, so I don't know if we're just going to distribute the monies to you.
So I think that we could talk about an RFP for the bigger picture.
Right.
Or we could work on the small picture, the $1,000. And to your question, um, I think that would answer the timeframe on that.
Okay. Cause I, I pointed out to the committee, the team, that because of the dollar amount, it could be a lot simpler. They really feel like they would like to have some choices, a line choices between a couple of people. So they would like to have, I hate to slow it down. Are you saying that because of the dollar amount, we wouldn't necessarily have to get multiple?
Well, I'm, well, I'm suggesting that if you want to really look at going through the extensive, uh, project with branding and you, you want to consider your options and there may be numerous options, then requesting proposals and, uh, talking to all of those respondents and narrowing that down to a selection, there's obviously some time there. Michael Ann's point is, are we, is the city issuing that RFP? Cause then some state procurement issues, uh, come up and they're, they're not difficult the issues, but, um, we follow, you know, then that procurement. So that may be a good idea. Now really below $60,000 for professional services, if you're calling it professional services, we could, we could contract with a vendor. Uh, I think we'd have to, to look at that, but I don't know that it's not a bad idea to see what all of the, see what interest there is. We might have, uh, a, a lot of response to something like that, so.
So we're just wondering which fiscal year to put that on?
If we just wanted to say, if we said we have $1,000 and let's do a simplified task, maybe you don't go to that extent. But I, I think we talk about, you know, what the intent is. Do we want to, to really line up a vendor that is going to be with us throughout the process?
I think that's their goal is to have, you know, that, so probably next fiscal year then for that, if that's, I don't want to slow it down, but in time...
Well, if, if the branding committee isn't quite ready to proceed with requesting the additional phases from the commission, I mean, that's something we could try to work into the final budget. We have between June 1st and July 31st, um, to try to make changes to the final budget. I just wasn't sure what the timeline is for this project.
But I think it's an important step right here. This is a critical step. And so you probably, I mean, my opinion, I don't know that you want to shortcut it and, uh, and so to Michael Ann's point, as we're getting close to the end of fiscal year, we may just plan on doing that selection through the rest of this year, lining things up and then, you know, come July 1st, we're really ready to roll.
I think that's a great plan.
Yeah.
Just a side note, just because the salary increase compensation is very line item and obvious, I will not be part of that conversation of the salary increase. I'll probably leave the room and if we could possibly go on that subject, I would appreciate that because of the conflict of interest. However, I did talk to Randy about the entire budget. He said, Randy and I said it's appropriate to go.
Alright, so I guess we're open, while we're open for discussion still on salary and if Commissioner Chatterley like to dismiss herself in that. We, we, right currently in the budget, we have a 1% increase in the interim budget. We came back to Mr. Berry at, at the last workshop and said we'd like to see the numbers for 2%. He's provided one and a half and two, so at this point, it's where do we want to go? Do we want to go to one, one and a half, two? To bring them up with what the others are getting is what was our role, whatever. Was most of our union contracts correct, Mr. Berry, have gone up 2%?
That's correct, 2% on those. And I know that the water utility said, we're going to do it 2% across the board. So that's, 2% applies to non-represented employees as well. And, uh, I'm not sure if this is talked about at RPS last night, but I think they were considering, uh, 2.5 to 3% bump for employees and I'm not sure how that came out.
3% last night.
3%.
So I did make a note on there, um...
Well, administrative got to, yeah, yeah.
Now I'll add one thing. Um, when, when we're talking general fund employees, we're talking GRT and the utilities are really talking user rates. And so, um, what, part of our, what we brought you is based on a flat projection on GRT and that really is a, a, you know, a different consideration than both utility boards. Um, and so we, we had thought about that in our recommendation to you as 1%. And it, I don't know that it's really a strong recommendation. It's just a, a, a placeholder, a, a number that we put in the budget, it's your consideration. It's just a placeholder, a number that we put in the budget, it's your consideration, but it was based on a flat projection of GRT.
Now for comparison, I also put in there our current year budget and you'll see that the budgeted salaries are higher than even with a 2% raise. And so I did make a note on there for you that, you know, the overall decrease in the budgeted salaries since fiscal year 18 is mainly due to retirements, unfilled positions, employee health coverage changes and also consolidation of job duties. So, you know, with some of these retirements or people that have left, the consolidation of this position to be clerk treasurer is a savings to the city. Also the change made with our public works director who also is sanitation director. We've seen a little bit of savings there as well. And then there's been some changes in the fire department structure as well with the retirement of Chief Matthews. So, you know, as sometimes these higher paid staff members retire, we realize some savings there as well, so. We've had a lot of employees with children who have approached the age of 26 and are no longer eligible for health coverage. So, you know, those types of changes will have an impact as well, so, being that health insurance is so expensive. So I think, you know, based on whatever the commission's decision is, what I'd like to do in presenting this to DFA is to really show that we're submitting a balanced budget. And so when we did the draft, our budgeted revenues and expenditures were fairly, fairly close. But then anything additional such as those capital outlet items that we talked about, the city manager vehicle, the grant management software, the expenses with the airport, we would be clear to DFA that those are being budgeted to come out of our reserve. And so those are kind of those one-time hits to the budget that we always talk about. And so in our cover letter, whatever I provide to DFA, I'll make sure that we spell that out for them and it's clear to them. So, and the ambulance also. So we had $75,000 for a new ambulance. And of course, any other additional items that you may want to suggest this evening, but it is all coming out of general fund reserve.
And what is the wish of the commission here?
Say?
Yeah, I'd like to see us go with the 2%.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to go with the 2% salary increase. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we would like to implement the 2% increase. Can we call Lori back in now?
Yeah.
Commissioner!
Okay.
Okay, so then, Mr. Berry, I guess the rest of it is then acting on all of it.
Right. I think we have...
We'll have to approve the resolution 201831?
Right. Yeah, that's acting on all of it.
So what was the final decision then on the branding? We would just try to incorporate that into our final budget?
I'm kind of lost on that one. I thought we were gonna do the 1,000 out of this year.
But out of this year's.
Right.
And that's...
But I think we can do that, but what I thought I heard is let's probably put some effort into the RFP and line up a qualified party there and that expense may or may not hit in the, depending on how that process goes in the current fiscal year. But I think we can anticipate the other branding expenses. I think the rollout was probably looking at August, so of all of the other expenses, I think we would anticipate those in the upcoming fiscal year. So 1,000 may be covered under the current budget, but generally the estimated costs are gonna roll into the new fiscal year.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those, those estimates of costs, I think Lori, the committee put a range on that, but until we get a vendor, it may be...
And Robin is working on a very specific marketing plan with better cost estimates. So I think the idea is if we could put out a general request and then be able to fund that first logo and style guide.
Correct.
With that $1,000. And then come back and request additional monies once we kind of have someone we are wanting to work with for the design of some other services.
So if you look at your sheet, phase one, phase two, and you added up the maximum and then you rounded up a little, we'd be at about 20K.
Do you feel that would be a good number for you?
I think that is plenty to get that going. I don't even know if we'd use all that, especially if you're going to do lodgers tax for your specific ads or something, then just for the actual nuts and bolts of the brand, I think that's very fair.
I guess the commission could put the money in the budget and do similar to you do with other task orders where you require them to come before you to approve specific tasks. Just because the money's in there doesn't mean that it's available to them without commission approval.
So based on that, would you like to budget 20K for that effort?
So moved. I like it.
And this would be coming out of the non-promo?
The non-promo, so 20K we're gonna put in there.
So commissioners and mayor and commissioners, we have the draft budget. We have the true-up list here and we have the economic development, the things we considered tonight, including the branding, lodgers tax and then the economic development proposal. So I think with your consideration, if you could give us direction on all of those things.
And I think since we're having the special meeting on June 12th, the joint meeting with the lodgers tax board and the other nonprofits, we did just plug in some kind of arbitrary numbers based on this year's lodgers tax budget. So certainly if we get some funding requests, the board could still entertain those. But I think that we're gonna be completely probably reworking this budget possibly out of the discussions that we have on June 12th. And so that one's, that one's pretty much still a draft and it's gonna be subject to changes in the final budget, so.
And as Michael Ann always reminds us, it's a living document.
Yes.
It changes.
It changes.
Probably be a few bars next year.
Just a few. Okay, so then with the direction and with what we recommended to Mr. Berry and Mrs. Antonucci there. I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution 201831 with the amendments in place.
So moved. I'll second.
One more thing, was this where we were gonna ask the commission to concur with the designation of the funds for the economic development?
That's part of the, that's part of the amendment.
I thought we did, yeah, I thought we did.
Okay, so that's...
We do concur with that.
Indeed.
That, that thing. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 201831, the 2018-2019 municipal interim budget with the recommended amendment.
I hate to ask, but can you repeat who made the motion?
Motion was Lindy.
Oh, okay. I want to be clear. Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Sagada?
Yes. Okay. Do I skip it? City managers report.
Mayor, I'm glad you asked. Mayor and Commissioner, I attended the New Mexico Watershed and Dam Waters Coalition that was held May 10th and 11th in Las Cruces. We are actively recruiting that group to come to Raton next year. And so in addition to attending, I made a presentation to the group on the Lake Maloya watershed stabilization following the track fire, which is recognized as one of the most successful watershed reclamation projects following a fire in New Mexico or as somebody told me, the only successful one. We have been involved in the review of the preliminary design of the hospital drive construction improvements and right now currently we're asking the DOT for clearance on the environmental assessment, so that's underway. And once we get through that, we'll finish up the design and set a date for the letting. And then finally, Mayor and Commissioner, we are currently involved in some activities anticipating inspections of both our solid waste facilities, recycling facilities and the Lake Maloya dam in the near future. Those are all unannounced inspections, but we're in the window of the time of year when we would expect to see those inspectors. That's all I have, Mayor.
Wow, thank you.
Do you think it would be possible that you give us a short synopsis of your report to the dam bureau, maybe a 15 or 20-minute dissertation?
I'm glad you asked. I have the PowerPoint presentation fired up, ready to go. Don't go anywhere, Marty.
Forget about it.
And just one thing that you said about trying to get a convention here. I'm going to the board of directors meeting for the league next weekend and they are taking applications for conferences in the future. So that'd be awesome to do, but we just don't have the capabilities yet. It's something we need to look, to work forward, to do, yes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would state that the local humane society has stated that they're bringing their convention to Raton also and would expect about 150 people to attend from all over the state. So that would be a good convention for us.
Cool, right on. Okay, at this time I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I will move that we go to closed session pursuant to 10-15-1H2 personnel, city manager.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session pursuant to 10-15-1H2 personnel, city manager. Oh, and we have to do a roll call on this.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Sagada?
Yes.